Let's welcome everybody to the Monday, October 28, 2019 council meeting. A roll call. Everybody is present except for Mayor Gahn. Unfortunately, he's had a passing his family. We would like to send his condolences, or our condolences to him and Gloria. Everybody please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Breathe, it's public forum. Anybody from the crowd have anything they'd like to address the council? Milo, please state your name and your records.
Deputy Mayor, City Manager, Councilors, my name is Milo Heaney. As most know, Doug Morrell and I are running for City Council. As we were out in the boat going door to door, talking to people, we saw house after house empty, most beyond repair. We have 129 houses in Caribou for sale by realtors, and a lot more for sale by owners. As I stated a few weeks ago, Caribou's in a crisis. Talking to people, going door to door, the comments we got was, "I've been here 10 years or more, and my taxes have doubled." Some people made comments that we are not going to be able to stay here. We just can't afford to live here in Caribou. People went on Facebook after Thursday night's debate and made comments that Caribou was booming, in their opinions. What a joke. I've seen, I see tonight in line item number 10, that as councilors, you will be looking at several different departments' budgets. I'm asking you, as councilors, to not make rush judgments. Study these budgets. People are depending on you. I stated many times, I'm not looking to get rid of services, nor am I looking to see people lose their jobs. But I believe we have lots of wasteful spending that's going on, and that's what, as councilors, you need to be looking at. On November 5th, if Doug Morrell and I are elected to council with help from the other councilors, we will study these budgets and make it more affordable for Caribou residents. Vote November 5th for Doug Morrell and Milo Heaney. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to speak on the public forum?
Don't mind me if I'm a little nervous, because I'm not used to speaking in front of a group of people like this. Very, the first thing I want to say is, I miss, I'm sorry about missing that meeting of the people that are running for the council, but I did look at it on YouTube. You've got a poor sound system in here, even for the people that are here. You know, somebody in the back here can't hear. Can you turn these things up a little bit, some way or another?
The microphones are actually just so that the sound on the video feed is picked up.
Well, the video isn't picking it up very good. You know, I didn't, I didn't hear much of the meeting at all. There was only one person that I could hear well. Yeah. I'll have to start by saying I'm sorry I missed that meeting, where the discussion took place with a few citizens and a potential new councilors we may see elected on the next year's city council. I would hope a change would take place, but there are no questions because of the special interest groups such as government employees, which there are many in this city, and it seems the government employees is the biggest industry in the town, and special interest prevails. Also, many citizens that have close ties with the city government, with business arrangements, also are in the mix, and the council is dedicated to them and not the citizens at large. This is a large voting block to overcome. The private sector pays all the bills. In other words, there are people working in, in, in public service in the community. There's more people that work in public service than in the private sector, actually. It's a big block. I'm glad to see in the mix a businessperson and a person with an industrial background running and, and challenging the people on the, for the council positions. I wish them well. I may be a little biased, but it saddens me to see no, no attendance at council meetings by more ordinary citizens. And I would hope that the next council would project that to the citizens of, the citizens of Caribou, and get them to come to the meetings and see what's going on. And that there's people that never attended council meetings that are running for the council, that I don't think know what is really going on. That is not to say that they may, if elected, just represent certain segments of society within the community, but all the citizens at large. Having served on the city council, I've experienced this to my dismay. It seems that the only time you see a crowded council chamber at a meeting, it's a crowd with a handout, and they have members on the council that only favor their positions in public spending and may have close ties to the spending programs. I would hope to see a change for the better of the next council membership that would change the cause of the way we spend hard-earned tax dollars provided by the private sector, which I might add pays all the bills. Mill rates are also the terms used most often to satisfy the curiosity about how much our taxes are going to be, and nothing can be further from the truth. It's the money spent to run the, the city infrastructure that dictates whether you pay a higher or lower property tax. The mill rate is just a coordination of property values of different properties and a way, a way to, to, to make sure that everyone pays their fair share. You can come up with a lower mill rate and pay more taxes than the year before if a true valuation of different properties is not done on a yearly basis. If, if sales of real estate and types of property, the sales of real estate and types of properties every year dictates the fair values and should be considered on a yearly basis. For example, if you only evaluate properties in a 10-year period, which they've been doing in the past, and someone's taxes goes down, that means that for 10 years, that the ones that went down paid a higher tax than the ones that went up. So that is about all I have to say, and if you don't quite understand what I said about the mill rate and the way we're taxed here, I'd be glad to have any one of you call me at any time so I can explain to you what I mean. And, but I wish you all well at next year's council, no matter who's on it. But I would hope that they would stir enough enthusiasm to get people at these meetings to stop these increases in taxes and, and, you know, to stop this foolish spending because of grant money coming in, or the seeking of grants to spend money, such as the new fire station and police station. We may need those things. I'm not saying we don't need them. I'm saying they are driven by grants, and grants have always put us in trouble and created higher taxes for us. That's all I have to say.
Anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak? We'll move to the next agenda item. Okay. Agenda number four, we get the city council minutes for A, the July 23rd work session. Everybody's received a copy of that. Anybody have any areas or emissions for the July 23rd work session? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to accept. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Council item number 4B, September 23rd, 2019, regular meeting, I believe we.
Yep. I, I think my name is missing from the attendees. If you want a, a motion to add my name to present councilors for the September 23rd meeting.
It's not the last meeting, it's the meeting in September.
That's correct, yes.
Seconded to amend the minutes.
Oh yeah, you are missing. I'm in the poll.
Anything else? Any other areas or missions in the minutes? Okay. Any discussion? Favor? Motion carries. Number five, September 2000, line financials.
So these financials, excuse me, represent 75% of the way through the year, and run down to the summary pages. So as far as our expenses, they, you can see that we're trending close to our 75% with, with most of the departments. We have the protection, which is our streetlights program, and that's, we have been seeing some costs with, since we took ownership of the streetlights, needing to have some of those repaired, and it's not the new ones, but just other lights that need to be repaired, so we are seeing an increase in those costs. Small additional costs in Caribou emergency management, which generally that's one-time expenditures, and so that should level out by the end of the year. The airport is still the, the one department that's high above its budget, and that again, as we've talked about in the past, was we anticipated being able to have an FBO up there to help with some of those costs, and that just didn't pan out, and so for the rest of the year, we anticipate seeing additional costs there with the airport. And the biggest expense up there was the fuel purchasing that we, we did earlier on in the year. We have enough fuel, we believe we have enough of fuel for the rest of this year, so we won't be purchasing anymore until next year, and we'll still be able to, to meet our nine-month mixing requirement that we have for the airplane fuel up there. But overall, our total expenses were at 73%, where we're supposed to be at 75% of the way through the year. We're, we're trending under our total expenses for the year. Our, some of the other departments, the snowmobile trail maintenance is at 92%. Most of that, again, was related to the efforts in the spring, and if we can keep a rainy winter until January, it'll hurt the overall economy, but it would save that, that budget. We'll, we'll likely see an overrun in that snowmobile maintenance budget by the end of the year as well. Housing is at almost exactly 75%, and the FSS program is at 73% on total expense. The Nylander, or the economic development, the TIF budget is at 41%, and the museum is at 84%. We've talked with the Nylander Museum about their expenses. Some of, some of those were, again, one-time costs associated with improvements in the building, and they recognize that they need to stay within budget and we're working closely with them to, to manage those funds. And we'll get into some more discussion with them tonight with their, their budget. The revenue report currently, again, being 75% through the year, revenues are currently at 85%, with most of that being the, the property taxes that went out and being able to show those as money due. But overall, we're, we're looking positive with the revenues. We, we believe will be coming in higher than anticipated with revenue projections for the entire year. Do you answer any specific department questions you might have?
Anybody have any questions regarding the financials? entertain a motion to accept the.
Move to accept the financials.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the financials. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. So now we've got bid openings of wars and appointments. We've got something special here. We've got recognition of Penny Thompson.
Counselors, we, we had this on the agenda last meeting, but Penny was detained coming back from the vacation, and we wanted to just present this big accomplishment to her tonight and, and share it with, with you and let you know what she's been doing. You may recall, last year, we had a lot of discussion about the need for regular assessment updates, as even been mentioned tonight, trying to look at the assessing process and making sure that Penny is trained on how to do that more regularly so that we don't have to incur the 10-year major expenses, and part of that has been her going out and getting additional training. And just this last year, she was recognized, having taken several courses, some lengthy tests. She can probably explain it to you better than I can, but she was recognized by the International Association of Assessing Officers this year, receiving a residential evaluation specialist certificate, and not only did she get a pretty plaque, but she's got a lot of knowledge that goes with it. So definitely want to congratulate her and everything that she's been doing. Penny, do you want to say anything else on that?
Well, the manager makes it sound like I did that all in one year, but I actually started taking my first IAAO course in 2013, and I took the last one in December 2018. And when I started, I was just trying to learn more about mass appraisal, because it's something that through the state of Maine and their training and their testing, they don't, they don't cover a lot of that, even though I've repeatedly said that when assessors, when you pass your certified Maine Assessor exam, which is also an eight-hour exam, you don't have really all the tools in your toolbox to do everything that you need to do for a town. So I went out to try to find ways to learn the things I felt was missing from that education program. So I didn't go into it thinking about an IAAO designation. However, after the idea was planted, I could see that attaining this professional goal would reflect not only well on the assessment department, but also city administration, who could use this measurable achievement to show our citizens that fair and equitable assessments are an important priority. So as the manager mentioned, to earn the designation, I took a total of seven week-long courses and then an eight-hour case study exam, where they give you different information about property, and you have to go through and measure different types of depreciation using different methods and answer 150 questions. Actually, when I took my test, they had a fire drill in the building in the middle of my test, but I was able to make up the time on the end. And then after I had all that, I had to take a four-hour master exam for that, and my goal all along was to become knowledgeable enough to complete an in-house quarterly review project, and end that with an in-depth sales study. So essentially, we would have an in-house revaluation project, and the number kind of gets batted around, but the last revaluation project in Caribou in 2012 was $324,500. So no doubt it would be more when that time comes again. After that revaluation project, what I heard most from our residents was that they felt that it was somebody from away that came up here. They didn't feel that they were given a lot of information on the sales that were used to develop the models to price the property, and that kind of hounded the manager to be able to do this, and the manager before him, because it started, it actually started with Austin. And so that we, the next time around, when someone goes out to a property, that person is me, and when someone comes in to complain, they're, they're coming to my desk and complaining, and they're not saying, "Well, those guys in Pittsfield." Well, no, it's you guys right here, and I think that's something that, the feedback that I got from the last project that people felt was important. So that's, that's what it is, but I didn't do it all in one year. I started in 2013, so. Don't know if anybody has any questions.
[inaudible]
Okay.
Get a picture with the ladies.
I have to say a special thanks to my husband Dana, who's here, who always supported this goal of mine and had to keep the home fires burning when I was studying, and he knew he didn't want me to come home if I hadn't passed my test, because he knew I would not be fit to live with.
Oh, yeah. Dana, Jane, Jane, my phone.
Just you?
I'm, I'm good. Yeah, nice. She wants it.
That's nice.
Appointment to the planning board, item 6B, Dennis.
Ken, do you want to?
Wasn't prepared to. Yes, we, we have some vacancies on our, on our planning board, and luckily enough, actually Jane advertised for us to get the word out that we need some help. Amanda Jondo came forward. Amanda is a civil engineer and works for Harriman Associates. I think she'll bring something to our table, an excellent candidate, so we brought her name for you folks to consider.
Motion to accept? Second. Moved and seconded to accept. Any discussion?
Yes. What's the term to expire, Ken?
She'll be filling Evan Graves' term, so.
Evan Graves, okay.
I believe it's 2022. We discussed it earlier, is it 2022?
Yes, we did.
Your memory is good as well?
To fill the unexpired term of Evan Graves, is that the motion?
There we go.
Okay.
Yes, sure.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Seconded that. Thank you, Tom. Oh, councillor, air.
Motion carries. 6C, bid for tax-quiet property. That looked at 29 Liberty.
Counselors, I'm going to let our, our financial officer take this one.
So at the last meeting, we had, the previous owner's daughters were here, looking to purchase the property on 29 Liberty. They actually came in and made the full payment for the back taxes today. We also did get a bid for the 8500, which was the minimum bid set, from Daniel Phelan. So I think that you would probably want to consider previous owners.
Previous owner paid.
The daughters, yeah, paid the back taxes today, yep. And then the other one, we received the $2,800 bid for, and then that was the minimum bid set by Scott England, and that's map six, lot 10, section A on the Green Ridge. Would move to accept that sale as well.
Entertain a motion on the first one for the 20, for the amount.
That's $3,0234.86, paid by Tina Tracy.
Are we talking about the same property?
Yeah.
So someone paid all the taxes?
Yeah, at the last meeting, the lady was here.
And then somebody else made a bid?
Uh, yeah, because we still had it out for, for the minimum bids amount.
Well, you say that you recommend accepting the bid.
Uh, no, I recommend accepting the money from the family.
The staff memo was written before the packet went out, when we had the, the one bid for $8,500 from a non, just an interested party, but then the family members came in today, and the council said if they can pay their back taxes, that we would work with them. So they came in this morning, and they paid all of their back taxes, and so really, it's a question for the council is, do you want to take the $8,500 bid that we received, or allow the family to retain the home, having paid, or having tendered the funds for all the back taxes?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the family's payment, and also to accept the bid for the second property.
Want to listen to the other?
We can do it separately. All right, I make a motion we accept the family's payments and they retaining ownership.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion, all in favor? Motion carries, and on the second one, to accept the bid.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to accept the bid on the property at Green Ridge Road. Any discussion? In favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries. The hearing, so.
Uh, yeah, because we still had it out for, for the minimum bids amount.
Well, you say that you recommend accepting the bid.
Uh, no, I recommend accepting the money from the family.
The second one, the second bid, there's two parties.
The staff memo was written before the packet went out, when we had the, the one bid for $8,500 from a non, just an interested party. But then the family members came in today, and the council said if they can pay their back taxes, that we would work with them. So they came in this morning and they paid all of their back taxes. And so really, it's a question for the councils, do you want to take the $8,500 bid that we received or allow the family to retain the home, having paid or having tendered the funds for all the back taxes?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the family's payment and also to accept the bid for the second property. We can do it separately. All right, I make a motion, we accept the family's payments and they retaining ownership.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. And on the second one, to accept the bid?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid.
I'll second it.
We'll just second to accept the bid on the property at Green Ridge Road. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Public hearing, so you have the Safe Alternatives Medical Marijuana License Renewal.
Is the public hearing open?
I'll open the public hearing at 6:20, uh, at 6:29.
Before Kayla even says anything, I would just say that the has been inspected, application was received, it's right here. It was advertised, as it's told, I've sent out notice to the abutters, including those that don't really touch, but around that area. And I have, it's been inspected by the fire chief, the police chief, and the code enforcement. And I have a signed note saying that they have no issues with the dispensary.
Public hearing's open.
Firstly, Leo Tredell is our executive director. He's very sorry he cannot make it tonight due to a family emergency. My name's Kayla. For anyone that does not know me, I am the retail manager for Safe Alternatives. Numbers are good. I very much appreciate the opportunity that you guys have given us and hopefully to continue doing business with you.
Anything for council? Anybody? Simple summary, close the public hearing. What are council's wishes?
Move to accept the renewal of the license for Safe Alternatives.
Second. Moved to second and renewal of Safe Alternatives. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7B, access 89 bar and grill electric license. Dennis?
You opening the public hearing?
Oh, there's public hearing. We'll open the hearing at 6:32.
This is a, a business has changed hands. And you've gotten a copy of the application. It has been advertised in the paper. It's been posted and available in the clerk's office. And the health officer, which is the fire chief, the police chief, and code enforcement officer have all approved this. The new owner tonight is here. If you had any questions.
Council have any questions? Questions from the public? Public hearing closed at 6:33. What are the wishes of council?
Motion to accept the license application.
Moved to second and to accept the application. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. New business, discussion regarding streetlight maintenance agreement with Real Term. Dennis?
Councillors, at the completion of our LED streetlight installation project, Real Term was the company that helped facilitate all of this. And they have forwarded to us a proposed maintenance agreement, where they would continue to help us with providing software and reporting mechanisms, where people can go onto a website and basically help notify us when things are out. And they would be able to track it through their reporting systems and work directly with R.L. Todd, who did all of the installation work for us. And they would basically be the ones that would manage the streetlights for us, rather than placing that burdened immediately onto the, the current staff that we have. They would work with us and train us over the next couple of years to be able to do this ourselves. But in the meantime, they propose that for the, the cost of, if it's $500 or $600 a year, they would, they would do this program for us. And, and so it's tonight on here for, for your consideration. If you have any questions or concerns, we can take that back to them. I would note that we do have in, in the agreement, recognizing that they are a local company, it would, we would probably be contracting with them anyways because of their licensing. There are certain requirements that any electrician has to have to actually be up on these utility poles. And currently, R.L. Todd's the only one in the area that has those certificates. So it's more a facilitation of, for that $600 a year for them to be able to help manage these things for us until we can get a better grasp of, of our own needs. We expect it will be very minimal maintenance in the first year, because these lights are brand-new. But for those occasional call-outs, we would be able to utilize their services.
Council, any wishes of council? Motion to accept or?
I'll make that motion to accept.
I'll second. Is that to authorize the city manager to sign?
Yes.
Moved to second and any discussion?
I should also clarify that this $600 is just for the cost of having them do the work. But if there's additional costs for materials or R.L. Todd's time to go out and actually do the work, that would be in addition to this cost.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carries for the two. Discussion regarding phone services contract from municipal buildings.
Occasionally, we do look at the service providers that we have for our different utilities that we can. One of those is our phone services. For the last five years, we've been utilizing OTT, or Otelco, as they were formerly known. And our contract with them expires in November. We were contacted by another similar provider, GWI, who wanted to give us a quote for changing over to their services. And the, the process, we, as they looked at their contract, they gave us quotes to renew their services. And GWI came in at a lower cost than OTT for changing over services as well as converting three of our DSL lines in some of our facilities to their GWI services. So it's, we are recommending, and again, you don't have to necessarily do it tonight, recognizing this is the first time it's come to you, but we recommend that we move forward with a five-year service agreement with GWI to convert our phone systems and, and the services based on the scope that they provided to us.
Any questions? Discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to go with GWI at their bid price.
I'll second that. Authorize the city manager to sign?
Yes.
Seconded forward. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Discussion of possible action regarding amendments to reimbursement agreement with poor bear filtration.
Councillors, during the last meeting, we talked with you about possible adjustments to the poor bear reimbursement agreement. I met with David Mika, who's here tonight. And we discussed the payroll situation they've been having, some of their concerns, and some of the proposed language that we could look at to help this local business out. One of the things that he mentioned to me is that they actually had some offers pending during the discussions that we were having. And since that discussion and prior to this meeting, they were able to actually get a third employee hired. And so the way this contract, the proposed language is right now that their, the first year, or the defined first year of this contract would actually run through November 1st of this year. And that would enable them to receive that full three-employee credit toward the reimbursement of the agreement. And then hereafter, it would be looked at in October of every year, as previously anticipated. The language has also changed so that they could receive a proportionate amount of reimbursement. If they, if they aren't, if they are not able to hire three employees before the next year is done, but hire two, they could still get a proportionate amount of reimbursement. There is language in there now that the, again, theoretically, if they only hire two next year, they could still get that additional one-employee reimbursement, have it rolled over to the next year. So if they hire four the year after that, they could still recoup their full reimbursement. And so the language was, is in your packet. I don't know if you have any questions for myself or for Mr. Mika about their process and what's happening. But we propose that the, the agreement be amended with this language and that I be authorized to execute that on behalf of the council.
Has the generator finally been completely installed?
We're working on it today. It's pretty close. The wires, generator is physically on the slab. The fan's on the slab. And I think I'll have to put the oil tank in as soon as I can.
Okay, so when we first started this to now, how many employees did you start with and how many do you have now? Have you got the full three new ones?
As of today, we've hired a third employee.
So you've got three new ones?
Additional employees from last, last year.
So you've got three more employees this year than you had?
Last year.
When we signed the agreement. And last time when we spoke, you talked about that you had just two employees or whatever it was, I can't remember. But anyway, you had a higher payroll. If you remember, you said, "But our payroll's higher because we hired a person that was an engineer or something like that." And I just, I thought about that afterwards. And our, our objective in this agreement is not to have a higher payroll, right? Is to have more people?
Right.
Okay. So that doesn't?
Well, we have to meet a minimum base scale.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't be something that would be in lieu of, okay, all right. I wanted to just straighten.
Yeah, the goal is to meet the minimum requirement, which is in agreement for, for pay, and also to hire three additional people.
Right, so you've, you've got the, the three more from the beginning, okay.
How many employees do you have last year?
I think it was 42, and I think we're up to. We have 43.
How many do you have this year?
As of today, we have 46. The third person who's started employment today.
So between September 1st, wow, wait.
September 1st of last year.
Can you, my old eyes, man, they're getting bad. From, thank you. September 1st of 2018, you needed to hire three people by September 1st of 2019.
Above the number that we started with, that's correct.
Above the number you started with. So as of September 1st, how many employees do you have?
Of, of?
Of 2019.
Oh, yeah, two additional people, so it'll be 45.
So it'll be 45. So you have 45 people on the payroll, September 1st, 2019. And a year before that, you had 43 people on the payroll?
Correct.
In 2018.
So based on the original agreement, we were one short. And that's why I came back to, to Dennis and Albert and city council to see if we can get the agreement amended. To uncover the expense of, get the full reimbursement for the first year to be afraid of cost of installing that generator.
But you went two months without that extra person.
That's correct.
Okay. Any discussion?
So what's the amount going to be? Have you figured it out yet? What the pay, is that?
It's 20 or 14.
14, okay. Not to exceed, but it says not to exceed. But is that what the actual amount is?
Yes, I supplied a copy of the contract, copy of EO, and that matches exactly what the contractor's charged us.
And the full amount was what, 15?
50. 57.
Eight, seven, nine, nine.
Okay. Seven, 58,000. Okay, 58,000.
Fifty-eight, seven, seven, nine.
Further discussion? What are the wishes of council?
I make a motion to accept the agreement as amended.
Second.
Moved to second and to accept the amendment as, as amended, excuse me. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? For the two, motion carries. 9B, authorization to manage to accept property conveyance from Cytel. Dennis?
If you like, we can hold off on this one again until after executive session.
Yes, actually, I did see that, okay. We'll, we'll.
Yep.
So next one will be public agreement with the public works union. Does that get to the same, or are we going to do that after the executive session? Or we do that now?
Well, after the executive session.
Okay, so that'll go ahead. Right into the budget form. 10A, wire and ambulance.
Don't laugh. There, I can see. All right. Mayor, councillors, in front of you, you have our 2020 projected budget. A lot of time was gone through this year, amending lines. If you go down through it, there's a lot of, a lot of percentage subtractions in a lot of the lines. The, there is a pay increase, council-approved pay increase. That was a 2% up.
Clarification on that one?
Union.
Right, it was a 1% to the union. But we also had the, the sick benefit program that was instituted. And so that's what accounts for the, the full 2% on that line. But it was only a 1% increase.
I was doing the whole line, sorry. As we go down through, took out things, evaluated what we were doing. And like I said, there's a lot of subtractions all the way down through. Just about everything went down. The only increases I have, building maintenance went up 42%. And that was an increase the manager added in to fix the retaining wall, so it'd come out of operations instead of capital. And then other, the, all the other things that went up were insurances and, and benefits, workers' comp, unemployment. Everything that I can't control or have no control over was the pieces that went up. Like I said, there are a lot of reductions in a lot of the other lines. I tried to reevaluate everything that we were doing within the house and just go with bare necessities and, and was able to trim a lot out of there. and and was able to trim a lot out of there, but wages and benefits kind of overcame it.
This is also open. This is also open to the public as well as budget form. So any any questions from the public, please feel free to. Anybody have any questions? Counsel? Public?
The health insurance, ambulance and fire, like ninety-eight percent, twenty-four percent, ninety-eight percent. Plan selection changes by new staff. What does that mean?
So in the in the city's personnel policy, we we get our health insurance through main municipal association or through the main health trust. Make sure I get that one right. And they have six plans that we can choose from. One would be a single employee, a single employee with child or family employees. And we have two different tiers of that of those three options. So within those three different options, those we've got six different costs depending on which plan the employee chooses. Some I would say most employees choose the family plan, which has an annual cost of over thirty thousand dollars to the city. The other family plan has a cost of almost thirty-four thousand dollars to the city. So as the employee's life changes, they are also able to change which plan they're they select, which then.
And may resist.
Right, creates changes in the budget.
Any other questions? Do you in the public have any questions? Okay, so that takes care of that. Page ten A.
Do you want to do the capital piece now?
We can do that now if you'd like.
Sure.
Absolutely.
So on on capital, broke that up to needs and wants. We had our insurance inspector come through and then an engineering firm come through. Excuse me, big items on there were the roof repair. Again, this is the fifth year I've tried to get this one on. And then there's another. There's another piece on there, too. Oh, station the one hundred and fifty thousand for the structural strengthening of the roof joists that kind of go hand in hand with the roof repair. The only other things I have on there are, what is it, sixty-five for the remount? We've already taken half out to remount twenty-four in two thousand twenty. The other half is due or or would need to go in there in order to look at doing something with that ambulance in two thousand twenty. I put in every year, I always try to put in a little bit to replace monitors and stretchers. So it's not such a big hit on us and after that ten-year window, try to move some pieces that way. And then again, there's money in there, fifty thousand for allocation towards a new ladder truck in two thousand twenty-seven. If if again, council wishes.
I would add that the chief and I met this morning, we talked about those last two items, the ambulance monitors, stretchers and the replacement ladder truck. There is room in future years as far as looking at being able to move those costs into the future. We think we can do that and not put ourselves at too much risk. And so in what you're seeing on the screen now, I have moved those into the future. And so their total total capital for the department in two thousand nineteen would be about two hundred and sixty thousand with those projects that are listed and and using seventy-five thousand of existing reserve to help offset some of those costs.
Considering two hundred and ten of that is just to get the building. So we're back covered again.
I would like to see us get in contact with Press Kyle and see when their ladder truck is due and to check to see if we could have one ladder truck for both communities instead of two. They're only fifteen minutes away and we can take turns parking. Does that need a motion or?
We can we can look at that. We can bring back what that might look like or what the possibilities would do.
Any other questions from councilors?
I just need, did I hear one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for what structure or something?
No, two hundred and we need two hundred and ten to replace the roof and increase the structure.
What what's wrong with the structure, did you say?
The yeah, we had an engineering firm come through and the walls are moving apart from the inside walls.
So so we took the word of one engineer? Do we have a second opinion or anything?
Yeah, we can. It's pretty evident damage.
Well, I feel, you know, if you spend that kind of money, you could have a couple opinions.
How far apart have the walls moved?
Put my hands in.
It's like two or three inches. I went down there.
Yeah.
And saw it achieved. And I looked at every single wall in that fire department. Moving away from the wall. It's a lot, folks. Something's got to be done with that building. And you know what? It's a heck of a lot better than five million or ten million or something like that. Work with what we got. And I do agree with Milo. Maybe you do need to get another engineer in. But I wouldn't, maybe not an engineer, but somebody who can do the work. I mean, we know we know what what needs to be done, plain and simple. So maybe we should look at different contractors to do the work. That way we can get three or four different, however many contractors you want to hit on it. But something needs to be done before that place falls onto our firefighters' heads.
Question I have. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that this is money just being set aside, not not spent. So at the time, the repairs would be made. I assume that would go through a bid process and.
Yes.
So this isn't money being spent right now, just set aside.
This is ballparking to fix it.
Fix the problem at the point in time it'll be bid out. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's exactly what I was going to ask. We don't know that this is what it's, we're assuming that's what it might cost, but it could be.
We're pretty solid on the roof. I've been trying to get that for five years to replace the roof. So that that really doesn't.
So for the those that are in public that were maybe not familiar with this process, we were inspected by our insurance company. They identified the cracks. They said, you have to go get a structural analysis done. We advertised to all the local engineering firms and said, who would be willing to come and work with us to analyze this? And we only had one firm that responded to that, and that was Sewell Engineering. And so they came out, they inspected the building, they gave us a rough cost estimate of the seventy-five thousand for the roof membrane and and restructuring of the roof. And then the one hundred and fifty thousand for design and construction of the bracings for the rest of the building to to take care of the cracking. So we're still working with Sewell. I've asked them to give us a cost estimate to actually do the design part of the structural fix. And we'll be bringing that to you at a future date. But yes, it will go out to competitive bid for local contractors to do the work.
Joe.
Have they given, has the insurance company given you a timeframe before they decide to say so long?
They've already dropped us off.
Well, haven't they dropped you down?
Yes.
Yes, they've dropped us down to a to a.
Actual cash value with a big fat.
No cash.
No actual cash.
No, that's that went away. It's cash value with.
They took it down from replacement cost.
Oh, right, to depreciation, to depreciate a cost.
Depreciation, right.
Yeah.
And they put a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible, right?
Yep, and then anything in the building, if something does happen, that would drop at that down at that time to a depreciation level.
Right. Now, have they said how long before they don't insure you at all?
Currently, they just indicated that they will keep this coverage at the minimum amount until we get it fixed.
Paul?
Chief and Dennis, if you're going to do this roof, make sure it's going to retain heat unlike the one we have.
It it can't unless we restructure the building. There's not enough support up there to retain heat in the weight. We already know. We already know that. We we talked to Sewell about that.
What Sewell say?
So that's where we'll have to get into the design element of if we're going to create the bracings to retain heat on the roof, what additional bracing is necessary rather than just make sure the walls don't fall apart. So we'll we'll look at that through the design process to see what it's going to take to retain heat in the building.
And make sure it's cost effective. If you're going to re, if we're going to do all this stuff to retain heat, okay, how much heat are we going to retain and how much cost savings are we going to have? And if it's not even worth it, then.
We've already been told that we have to have a mechanism in place to make sure there's no more than two feet of snow on that roof at any point this winter. And so we'll be looking at that as well.
So is it because of the snow load?
That and the they're they're thinking that. And right now, when you walk across our roof, it bounces. So they're thinking that with water inside the insulation, that it's added more than twenty pounds per square foot up there. They've patched it and patched it. Whenever we see a leak, we call and Powers patches it. But it's kind of beyond that when you look at the seams and everything else, and it has been for years now.
So you've been asking for a new roof for five years?
Five years. I I put it tried to put it through capital.
When you get a chance, get all the invoices from Powers. Figure out how much money we've put into this roof for five years.
It hasn't been. It hasn't been that much. It's the after effect. Because when they come patch it, I mean, it's.
If you could for me.
Yeah, we can do that.
Invoices together, see how much Powers has put into this roof. I trust those boys down there.
Yep. No, they've been real attentive. They've come up in the middle of the winter. They've been real good.
No, it's a good group of guys.
Yep.
Hang on, guys.
So our insurance company has mandated that we keep the snow load to the two feet regardless of how we do it.
That was the engineer's recommendation, and that's what the insurance company said. You have to do that.
Have to do that. So that's.
Right.
Milo, did you have a question, Milo?
Yes, we toured that building back when we were doing the committee to the public meeting. We weren't shown that. How come? You toured us around and you didn't show us whether it's a, you put your hands up, it's a wall or something.
You can't put it through. It's in the inside walls.
That's what I mean. You didn't show us that though.
No, but that wasn't the focus of the committee at the time.
It was. I thought it was to see the structure of the building.
It had to do with room.
No, I believe it was for replacement, to build a new one.
Right.
Right.
Because of because of.
Space.
Well, space was one of the issues. And now you're bringing this up.
I've been bringing it up. This isn't the first time.
No, this is the first time I've heard it.
For, yeah.
First time I've heard this. And I've been to all those meetings, you know, meetings. This is what I'm talking about. We go to these meetings, we come here, and we get lied to. The school was a perfect example. I stood at those meetings at the seatback and asked questions, and we got lied to. How much cost for it? Now I'm hearing this tonight. This is what it's all about, being truthful.
Chief, when did you notice cracks in the wall?
Those?
Yes.
We've been tracking them for a couple of years, watching them. And they've been reported before.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions regarding right now on the capital improvement portion of the fire and EMIS?
I if I could also note that in the capital plan, we also have the we have two more years of payments on the fire engine. And that's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the next two years. So that's that's also in the capital. That will be paid off in two thousand twenty-one.
On the boiler, is that just that boiler or is that represent all the boilers?
All boilers.
That's that amount. It's not just.
Right, so.
Payment is representing all four.
Next year, our payment's a hundred and six thousand. The year after that, it goes up to a hundred and nine four. And what's anticipated is that we would take the payment we've been making on the engine and roll that into helping pay off the biomass boiler sooner so we can get out of that biomass payment at least two years early in in doing that.
That's what I'm just saying. So that's all we won't see that in the rest of the capital. It'll just be under this.
Right.
Under this.
Yeah, we just have one one biomass boiler line for all.
How much are we paying in interest a year on these biomass boilers?
It it varies. Let me I'll look it up for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Let's not buy biomass boilers ever again. Because this has just been.
I would agree.
I think we can all agree with that. Or maybe. Hey, thank you, Chief. Now we'll go to Public Works.
No, almost.
This is pretty small print though. We can do the capital portion of it at the same time. So it's all perfect.
So going through the budget for two thousand twenty, most of the items stayed at or some instances a little bit less. I'd like to point out the ones that went up a little bit from from our point. There's a lot of things that we don't control, the wages and the insurances and stuff like that. So that if there's any questions in that stuff, probably Dennis would answer that. But one of the one of the big ones that we that did increase was the sidewalks. We had been funding at two thousand dollars a year for sidewalks, and this year it was increased to six. I understand that it was the directive of the council that was looking for maybe some better sidewalks. So that's an opportunity to do a little bit more. So that was one of the large, one of the larger increases. And then I'd like to take, I'd like to take a little bit of opportunity to talk to you about the chip sealing process that we all know so well. If we do not fund any more chip sealing money than we have last year, two thousand nineteen, I I would like to not do the chip seal, but do the LPC, which is the light maintenance of hot talk in them country roads. I I ran some numbers and for what we were paying for ten and a half miles of chip seal, we could probably do six and a quarter miles of light asphalt, three-quarter inch overlay. And we're getting about seven years, we're we're using seven years as a start over on the chip seal process. So we at nine and a half to ten miles a year, on the seventh year, we start all over on the roads. And I believe that we can probably get close to eleven or twelve years out of the and maybe even more in some roads, depending on how light the traffic is or how heavy the farm equipment is. So I'd made a few notes and I would just, what I'm asking of the council is to take the same amount that we were chip sealing and let's put it towards asphalt for country roads at a three-quarter inch overlay. There 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 can probably be a bunch of questions about that. But what what's happened was, and it always was, you could do about four miles of chip seal to one mile of asphalt at an inch thick for equivalent in pricing. But the price of the liquid has gone up so much. Last year was the first year that we seen it. It went up fifty thousand dollars just for the cost of the liquid asphalt. And when you go up that much in a two hundred thousand dollar budget, you have to start looking at different avenues. And I I think that it would be a good thing for us to probably do away with the chip sealing process and at least try the the asphalt. I know that it will take a while before we find out for sure how it lasts. But I think all of us could probably agree that a three-quarter inch overlay is going to last longer than a chip seal will by far. When I talk to the DOT, does their side roads, they look for eleven years. There are a few roads that have a little less than that. The noise road in particular probably only goes about every eight years. But they use eleven to twelve years as a goal for that LPC is what they're calling it. And right now, we only have one vendor that's actually bidding on our chip seal. If we go to the LPC, we're back into three vendors that can bid. It's a much more. Um, if we go to the LPC, we're back into three vendors that can bid. It's a much more competitive program by doing that. So I'm not asking for any more money out of that. I'm not asking for any more money on the asphalt portion, what we do on our in-town streets. Um, all I really wanted to do is the money that we did allocate to chip sealing and the stone to do that process. I, I'd like to move that to asphalt paving in the country. And then I think, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Speaking of sidewalks, the curbing on High Street looks awful. Is that gonna stay that way?
So the curbing that is on the shop and save side is state of Maine project. We really have no control of that side. Uh, all of the street curbing that's on the sho, uh, Futren side was all done on the city's portion contract. And then from Glenn Street to Bennett Drive, that was also the city's portion. That was part of that project that we had talked about where we had the mill and fill versus the drainage side. Um, our side looks fine. I, I, I don't see no need to have to do anything different on our side. The other side, there, there's some blunders. Uh, that, that street probably never should have been, uh, ditched and, and the drainage should not have been done until the road was paved, not paved, but milled so that we would have had a, a good surface to work on. Um, even on the DOT side, we had to remove ten, I think it's ten of the frames that was on that side that the DOT had put in. Because once the, the road was ground and put into shape, uh, the basins were way too high. The water would have never gotten into them. So we had to remove them. Uh, we just took it upon ourselves to do it, or, or we'd have never got the street done. Curbing, yeah, there's a few. I, I can tell you that right on Glenn Street, I watched a school bus run over that curbing to make that intersection, uh, and flatten that right out. Um, shop and save, I, I seen cars that went right down over the, the edge of it. So it's, it's not our responsibility for that. I mean, it was Allen Trombley's paid, Trombley's Industries to pave and DOT paid them all to do whatever they do. And, and I don't know whose fault it was for not protecting it, but.
Yeah, but it's scraped for, I mean, twenty feet at a time, I mean.
Some, some of the.
It wasn't a vehicle.
No, some of that scraping, I believe, was when the, when the street got milled by that milling outfit. Um.
So bottom line, it's gonna stay like that?
I'm thinking that it's gonna, yeah. Yeah, I'm thinking that's gonna.
Paul? When are we gonna see the sidewalks finished?
So I was out there today, um, and talked to them and they are, they're coming in the morning again.
Talked to who? Trombley?
Trombley's, yeah. Trombley's paving. They're the ones that we have the contract with.
And they're doing what?
Pardon?
They're doing what?
They're, they're the ones that we have the contract with.
No, I know, but you, you said something when I was.
Oh, I, so I, I, I've been after them pretty frequently and I thought they were gonna come. My last word that I had from them with the exception of today was they were coming Saturday or Monday. And neither happened. So I actually took a trip out today and they're planning on being here at eight o'clock in the morning. Now, whether or not they can finish, cause there's all of our side left to do. And there's still a second layer on some of what they done under contract number one. Um, the DOT has given them a drop dead deadline of, uh, November fifteenth. It has to be, their, my side's gonna be done long before that. But their side, they've got until November fifteenth.
Didn't they do that, something similar with Fort Kent, but they've been waiting three years for it?
That was, uh, yeah. So I, 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 I make no excuses for the paving company. Um, but they, they had a very large amount to do. And I think there might have been some type of agreement where it was gonna take a certain amount of time. I'm not sure that it was.
For Kit manager, they did not put a timeframe in their contract for that.
Do we have a time, do we have a timeframe in our contract?
Uh, I don't, not for what we're doing, but I, I know the company well enough that they're, they're gonna finish our portion. There's no question about it. They'll, they'll be here tomorrow. What they don't finish tomorrow is weather permitting for Wednesday, we'll finish Wednesday. That's how close we are.
Have we paid them already for their services or?
The only thing that we've paid so far is the surface. Um, we did pay for the surface.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and the milling. Yeah, that they have finished, yeah.
So we haven't paid them for the sidewalk?
Not, nothing yet.
Okay. So basically, we're not paying them until it's done.
Absolutely. Right?
That's what I wanted to.
Yeah.
Yep.
Getting back to the curbing, doesn't the state have a, you know, a checklist, a punch list when they finish a project? They, they didn't see that? I mean, who owns the milling machine?
Coastal was, the, the name of the company that did it was Coastal.
Okay, now, do they have insurance? I mean, do they? Uh, I mean, I hate this. It's somebody else's fault and they can't do anything about it, or somebody else paid for it. I mean, uh, we should at least make some noise about it.
So I can express some concerns from the council level if that's what you chose. Uh, if you guys would like to do that. Um, I, I meet fairly regular with the, uh, the DOT supervisor. Um, there may be some concern. It's hard to put a curbing back in place once the surface has been put on. Uh, and you're talking about twenty-five dollars a foot to do that sidewalk and curbing. So it gets to be fairly expensive when you, uh, when you have to replace large sections.
But if it's not our fault, we shouldn't be paying for it. And.
We, we didn't.
You gotta keep these main DOT guys accountable. I mean.
Well, so, so the.
Dave, uh, hold on a sec.
Yeah.
We're not just some city up north. I mean, these guys have got to understand that this is a city and if we're doing a project, we like it to look good. And it seems like every single time MDOT steps in here, we're, we're not getting done. And it feels like, it feels like we're just another people up north who cares. That's kinda how it feels like.
So I, I, I don't, I don't think that the blame necessarily needs to be on the DOT. Uh, although the DOT is the one that's signing off on that project. But it's Trombley Paving that hired the milling machine as part of our project. So part of our project, although it was not city, it was not the city that did the work, but the city paid Trombley Paving for the, that milling machine. And that milling machine is, I think that's what you're talking about, Dave, where the milling machine that went down by and scraped it. Um, so it, it may become on who, who is, who is more reliable, uh, responsible for it? Is it, is it Coastal that done the grinding that made the mistake? Is it Trombley's paving that didn't watch or didn't make Coastal come good for it? But I can ask questions tomorrow. I.
Is it, is it customary to do the curbing before the paving? I mean, it would seem to me.
So, s- s- so it is customary to do the curbing before the road.
If it's stone, if it's granite, I can see that.
Um, and it's, and it's, and it's, what, what happens, Mr. Martin, is the pad needs to be made. The curbing goes on top of the pad. The gravel goes in and holds it from kicking back. And then whatever you put for a surface goes up against the curbing and locks it there. And there's about three inches, you lose three inches of curbing by putting what we put on, two, two and three quarters to three inches. So when you go to take that curbing out, you're already down three inches below the surface. And once you break that seal, I'm afraid of what will happen with the water running down that gutter line. It, it's a catch twenty-two. It really is.
So you're saying we, to fix that curbing, we gotta dig up all that asphalt to fix it properly?
Well, the curbing has to come out and then I've been around long enough to know that we are not going to get new curbing in place that will butt up against the asphalt surface. So the surface of the sidewalk has to come out. The curbing has to come out and then some of the material that was used for backfilling has to come out in order to fix that.
Sorry, Jody.
You've got, you've got no bad time.
What, what bothers me about this is that this hasn't been looked at until Counselor Martin brought it up. That's what bothers me the most. So either Trombley should have known, Coastal, the operator should have looked down and said, oh geez, I'm hitting the curb, curb. You know, I mean, that's all I'm saying, Dave. And I don't, I, I, I'm not trying to harp on you, pal.
Oh, no, no, I, 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 I'm not taking it personally.
Keep people accountable.
Yeah.
That's been my biggest thing and it's why I vote the way I vote, is accountability.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, it's by far the worst thing to have to do to people, is make them accountable. But you know what? It's how I was raised. It's how many of the people in this room were, were raised. If you're not accountable for what you done or how it's going, then you're gonna end up getting the wrong end of the stick at the end of the deal. And I don't want that for the citizens of this community. If we're gonna sit here and pay everybody's hard-earned tax dollars on that puppy out there, we ought to get what, what we pay for. And, and Trombley Coastal, MDOT, whoever, whoever messed it up, in my opinion, ought to fix it. But.
I, I can pass it on tomorrow.
Yes.
This, this is a sidewalk.
Yeah. Okay.
So, um, curb cuts?
Yes.
Okay, I haven't had a chance to go down High Street or Bennett to, to, you know, or, or experience it. Um, but I, I'm taking my life into my hands every time I try to move around this town. I mean, just going from the library to the mall, um, there are no curb cuts. I have to jump curbs. I have to try to go down the street, um, in traffic to get from one place to the other.
So in this project here, in, in order for any federal funds to be involved with a state project, which is what's happened here, uh, part of the mandate is that all the sidewalks that are in that area have to be ADA compliant. So anywhere, but we'll, we'll say that the rest of the sidewalk is finished first. I mean, I know they're not completely serviced. But, um, all of the, uh, all of the tip downs are eight feet in length. Uh, any tip down that goes into a road where it crosses needs to have detectables. So if someone was using a stick, they can, they can tell the difference in the surface. Part of that project was not only making this ADA compliant, but you can now cross by the library. The, the, there has been tip downs and a, a platform made for, uh, the ADA compliance. And when we did the project right downtown, um, Herschel Street and Sweden Street and Record Street and Hatch Drive, them were all made ADA compliant. So now Bennett Drive will be all the ADA compliant. Uh, part of the capital projects that we can talk about a little bit later that I would like to do is I, I'd like to go into an MPI like we did with this street for North Main. And in that project, I've, I've worked up some estimates as well. And that street as well will be all ADA. The ADA compliant portion of it is really expensive. Um, and, and I'm, I'm not saying that's an excuse. I'm just saying it's, it's, it's part of, anytime that we have any state involvement that has federal funds, it all has to be ADA compliant. So.
But I, I would add, concerns about the sidewalk have been raised also by the council. And looking at how can we improve the sidewalks in the core of town, improve accessibility. Definitely we understand your concerns there.
So, so North Maine, I mean, is a good example. It's all granite curbing coming down through there. They're all at various heights. They are terrible to plow and there's places where that sidewalk's not only but three feet wide. Uh, an ADA compliant is a minimum of five feet. So when I work up estimates that we're asking the DOT to help us in, especially on a DOT street, um, I, I'm including all the sidewalks as well. And just for numbers, the sidewalk portion of North Main Street, just as far as the Weather Bureau station adds almost a hundred thousand dollars to the project. So you get a good sense of, you know, what kind of expense there is into doing that, so.
Will you retain the granite curbing?
No, that was putting back, uh, the estimate was done in an asphalt. But I'm also learning now that, uh, there's another outfit out of Bangor and I haven't had the opportunity to look at it, but they have a granite curbing machine, not a granite, a concrete, something like they use that, uh, Mars Hill and Tim Hortons. And it's a company out of Bangor that's doing it. And, and I've not had no official word from them, but I, from, it's my understanding from two local vendors that it is no more expensive than putting the asphalt down. So.
It does. It'll look, it'll be interesting to see how it holds up this winter on snowplow.
I, 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 I think that the concrete is gonna be stronger than the bituminous that we're using. Um, I do have some concerns about the, uh, the salt with concrete. It's usually not good in our, our barges. Um, but I'm not so sure without talking to the installer if there, that concrete isn't treated with something, so. So yeah, there's a, there's a lot to it. There really is. And, and I do understand and, uh, you know, I, I'm looking all the time to try to do something with them, but, but you can get across by the library now. I don't know if you've been there recently, but the tip downs have been put in. Um, my crews have painted the crosswalks back. Uh, they were not painted here on this street uh, because of the construction that was going on. That tar gets pulled out into the traffic. Um, three crosswalks have been painted in on High Street. And we painted the, uh, the two crosswalk, well, actually three crosswalks on, uh, on Bennett Drive after we resurfaced that twenty-three hundred feet or twenty-two hundred and fifty feet. So the well in the center got the new, got a new painted crosswalk and then down by Irving and then the one right at the mouth of, uh, High and Bennett. And them two are also ADA compliant. I mean, the, the, the tip downs have been made so that the, uh, the, the wheelchairs can get down on them. It's coming, slow but sure. Yeah.
I just got a question.
Yes.
Who was in charge of this project?
Which, which portion of it?
The whole thing. I mean, you, uh, safety supervisor.
So there was, there was two projects that happened. Project one is the, was the DOT's project.
Right, who overlooked that?
Uh, the DOT looked over that themselves.
You had nothing to do with that?
Yeah, I had nothing to do with project one, which was the drainage and the sidewalks and everything that's on that side of the road on the shop and save side.
But overall, you are, are, you are the general.
Oh, sure, yeah.
That's right. You're the ones that should be asking the questions about what's being done, what's not being done.
Well.
But I hear tonight you passing it on to Trombley's and Trombley's Industries. You know, you, you're the one that's, like Counselor Era said, it's all tax money.
I understand that.
That's out there and I, I see it happening. The power's gonna tear these curbs up and everything the way it was done. Wasn't done right.
So, well, they are done right. The, the sidewalks are okay. What's happened was when the milling machine went down by that side, it, it rubbed too hard on that, on that, uh, on that curbing. That didn't take the integrity away from that.
Well, still, it just, it, it is not a real good looking job.
It's, no, I, I'd, I'd agree. I mean.
I think for the money that we're spending here and stuff like, a job like that, you're the guys should be overlooking that and saying.
So I did oversee all of the, all of the milling and all the filling. And that was all part of the city's project, phase two of it. Uh, the sidewalks look much better on the Futren side.
I just like, you know, I hear you passing the buck.
I, I don't.
That guy and this guy, no?
I don't want to pass the buck. I, I don't.
Happened here tonight. I just, I just heard it, so, you know, I'm just saying that it's all money that's being spent. I'd like to see it wider.
Do you have any more questions? Um, on this, Tom? Or on this?
In a, uh, separate from this, um, is there any way we could, especially on the back roads, we could locate severe turns? Like out on the West Prescott Road, there's a pretty good one. It's a hard left ninety. Out on the Grimes Road, there's one that's a hard, hard left, you know? Is there any way we can just look at and get a cost analysis of salting those for the winter? I mean, see, see if we can get the ice down. Cause I've seen them, I've, I've helped, I actually helped out a young lady last year. They came out to an accident. Her car was flipped on its side and, I mean, she flew the snowbank, you know?
Yeah.
And to see if we can do something and if it, that way we can try to stave off all this crazy stuff, you know?
So the roads that you happened to mention, East Prescott. So, the roads that you happen to mention, East Prescott Road...
West Prescott.
West Prescott Road, uh, the Grimes Road, them are all DOT-owned. They pay the city to plow and sand salt, whatever. Um, and the cost that they pay will never, never cover the cost of salt. But if that's something that the council would like to do, I can, I can put an estimate together on what it would cost difference between sand salt versus the pure salt.
Or even sand or something, to increase traction.
Well, so we go through forty-five hundred yards a year to five thousand yards of sand. Um, I don't know how much more we'd have to put, and, you know?
Dave, you're not putting any on that curb. I drive that road every day. I live out there, and you plow it, there's none on that curb. And I mean, half it isn't your fault. These, we're talking about the same crew that didn't put guardrails next to the river out there. They just put signs, you know?
Yep.
Like, like, yeah, that's gonna stop me from flying into the river. I hope my Ford floats. I mean, but again, we gotta look, we gotta look at this type of thing and see, you know, if we can just do a, an assessment of these backcountry roads. It's, it's gonna happen less in the city because there's more traffic.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah.
I mean...
Any other questions from councillors? Any other questions from the public? The only thing I just wanna throw in there, we're talking about the sidewalks, but this should be a, overall, maybe we should be a little more studious as, as making, when we make contracts, of having deadlines in there. You know, as you said, well, they're gonna be here at eight o'clock tomorrow.
Yeah.
We hope they are.
We hope.
We don't know that, we need to, something we should follow up, not just on this.
Yeah.
On any project, 'cause they put us on background, so.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to throw in on that.
You wanna talk, capital?
Yes, capital on the Public Works.
So on the capital, I didn't bring one of my papers, but I can, I can, uh, I can go down through that. So one of the things that I budget for every year is, so that we don't end up with a, a large bill is, I put five thousand dollars a year away into the capital for replacement of pickups. Um, I have a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in there for the replacement of a plow truck with the hydraulic system. Um, the truck that we'll be replacing, I believe, is a nineteen ninety-nine. So it's, it's getting right up there in age. Uh, we're starting to see some swelling on the frame where the material has gotten in between the frames. I, I think, uh, the plow truck might have a few more years in it, but if we use it as a back row or as a replacement instead of a front row truck. Um, I, I, I put in there five thousand dollars on a surveillance system. I, I did get just one estimate, and it was, depending on what type of system we want, four thousand to five thousand, and it's from the same company that has our fire alarm system, in Lucian. Uh, never, I've never really considered that in all the years that I've been at Public Works, but when we had that break in the summer and they stole fifteen thousand dollars worth of stuff, um, it does kinda make you wonder if we shouldn't have some type of surveillance system.
Did you ever find out who did it?
Oh, yeah, 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 and, and we recovered ninety-five percent of the stuff, so, so we're very fortunate that way. Um, we, two previous years, we put thirty-five thousand dollars away each year for a new roof on our building. Um, so that's pretty much all taken care of, but I would like to put twenty-five thousand dollars in a reserve account to do something with our salt shed roof. About fifteen years ago, one half of it was done, and the other half's not been done. So I, I'd like to put twenty-five thousand away for that, and then I think, Dennis, you may have put the River Road.
Right, the, the last one there, the River Road repair account balance, uh, as we were putting together costs for the River Road, that was unanticipated expenses this year and, and last year. And so that reserve account has, has gone in the negative, and so we need to start putting money toward balancing that account. And so it's, I think we've got a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, one, two, three, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in that right now, that, over the next three years, just building up that account, trying to get that to balance.
I spent, uh, I spent more than what's in there on the, uh, the surface treatment for High Street, but we'll be, we'll be reimbursing the DOTs.
Yeah.
For half, so.
Will that reflect before the end, end of the year?
I believe it will.
Yeah.
I, I, I believe that we wrote a check for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, give or take a few thousand dollars. I, I don't remember exactly, but I think it's a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, which is pretty close to the, and then we also did a check for Bennett Drive to Soderbergh Construction for fifty-two thousand. So both were paid out of that account, which will put that in the hole, but we are getting back twenty thousand from DOT for Bennett Drive, and we'll have, um, ninety thousand from the DOT for the cost share on the, uh, actually, it's ninety-five thousand for the...
High Street?
High Street, yeah. The bills have to be paid before the DOT will reimburse us, so.
Any questions on the, uh, Public, Public Works, uh?
Well, I don't know if it's capital, but we had a problem last winter with hydrants, and I think we should clear that up, as who's going to shovel out the hydrants? And if we're going to rent something for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we shouldn't have to shovel it out of the snowbank to use it. So if, I don't know if I need a motion or what, but we need to clear that up. I mean, if I go rent a car, I don't have to shovel it out of the snowbank to get, to use it. So we're paying three hundred and thirty thousand to rent those hydrants. We shouldn't have to use Public Works' time to keep them clear. So, uh, can I make a motion to that?
I thought we were under the budget form here, but...
Well, it's part of the budget, and if we don't decide it, we're gonna run into the same problem again next winter. Well, maybe it won't be as bad a winter, but at some point in time, we're gonna have the same problem again. And I think if we rent something, it should be available to us on demand.
Do we need to break out a cost of what?
Well, you mentioned fifty thousand last year.
I, I don't remember even making an, uh, I don't remember what I had said as far as cost. For, for us, it's more of a time restraint more than anything else. When we have a winter with a lot of snow and then the wind, we had more wind than normal last year, and that's what puts the strain on the department. It's, it, you know, they can go out with the tobaccos in a day's time, they can clean all of the fire hydrants, but it's to have the manpower to do that.
But we shouldn't have to, we're paid.
I, I, I'm not arguing one way or the other, it's what you choose as a council.
I guess, this is something, other than the budget, this is something we could put on the next council as an agenda item to discuss.
If you'd like.
I understand that we need to handle less, but I mean, we're dealing with budgets.
Fine.
Can we just put this as a...
Works, surely.
And then we'll, then we could get into some discussion that way. Is that agreeable to everybody here?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll put that on the, and we'll, we'll address that prior to the upcoming snow season. Uh, any other questions on the Public Works Department, Capital, or...
So I, I do have a question. Um, is that something we need to put on the council agenda to possibly look at doing paving next year instead of the chip sealing? Are we gonna have more discussion about that, or?
No, I, I, if, I mean, council, I think we just build it into the budget the way you proposed it. If the council's okay with it, it just becomes part of your, your program.
Wha- whether we do the paving or whether we do the chip sealing, it's still the same budget.
I guess that would be, in my opinion, would be your call, if you think there's money better spent to do it that way than to do the chip seal.
It's, apples or oranges, right?
Just as long as they cost the same.
It's the, it's, so, so I didn't, I didn't come asking for more money to do a different type of project. I, I, I took the money that was available, and I divided about what I think the cost is going to be, and instead of nine and a half or ten miles, we're gonna do six point two five miles. And I think at six point two fives, it takes ten years to make a complete wraparound, and I think we can have longer life than that. So in the long run, although we won't see no real potential savings for some years, but we will in the future because we won't have to go back to them as often. The only downfall is asphalt roads are a little bit slipperier than, than chip sealed roads. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, so that moves Public Works Department, budget form, Nylander Museum, Dennis.
Okay, we're gonna change things up, we're gonna get some energy going. I'm Carol Higglestein, I'm going to use my teacher voice so that you can hear me clearly. Thank you. And Chief, I brought my own glasses.
I'll let you borrow them.
No, this is fine, thank you. Okay, I am here representing the Nylander, and there is one other board member who, full board member, who was able to come, and that is Carol Woffington, who, um, is a retired teacher also, and is our education liaison, as well as my memory. We have a potential board member, Dana Jones. He is an expert at grant writing, and he has taken over the, um, STK grant for the lighting in the museum. Unfortunately, others were not able to do it, we have two ill, we have one out of town, and one I did not hear from. So, that's who we are. Um, the mandate from previous councils for the museum has been to bring in more students. And as I have explained, and for those of you who are new, there are no longer field trips for the sake of field trips and education. They need to be tied into the curriculum. Teachers, um, on the board create lesson plans after dialoguing with the instructional staff in the schools, and then it's reviewed by the staff for accuracy and currency. We are always teaching to the curriculum, we are always teaching to the standards. This is true even with homeschoolers. Uh, the second mandate was to bring in more younger people in general, not just school-aged, but people like Councilor Ayer, the gentleman I'm sitting next to, I was sitting next to back there, those with children. Children hear about the museum and the programming, and they bring their parents and their grandparents. And there is nothing cooler than watching grandparents being instructed by their grandchildren. Students return after activities, theme weeks, mini-camps, speakers, and classes with adults of all ages. The third mandate was to bring in more visitors overall. Visitor numbers have gone from four hundred to eight hundred to twelve hundred to about fifteen hundred this year. And please remember, we are a volunteer board running a city department. We've had people from at least twenty-four states come in this year so far, and three different countries. This has become a marketing and economic development opportunity for city, for the city and in the area in general, and I'll get into that later. We were also asked to make it more visible. What can we say? How about the Nylander Chronicles that are in the Aristic Republican? That is our column that runs monthly. It is written by board members, it is also written, they were, some of them were written by our summer interns. Uh, quite a number of articles in the Aristic Republican besides the Chronicles, and there have been several stories on WAGM. Our Facebook page has grown in likes, we're approaching eight hundred, which isn't bad, and have become the main source of information for our patrons. Flyers are sent to schools, libraries, city halls, rec departments, teachers, and school districts. Word of mouth as a method of publicity has also expanded as people of all ages pass on what is happening at the museum. The results, as we've been told, above and beyond what has been mandated. The Nylander is a viable entity as interest programming and the number of visitors has grown. We have made the museum successful. So now it's time to take the museum to the next level. Several of us on the board last year recognizes this is as far as the volunteer board can go. Twelve hundred, fifteen hundred visitors. We are open on weekends, one to three, and it is us who are on deck. We have tried to get volunteers. Yeah, we know what getting volunteers is like, everyone is busy. So we have taken that on. So when Bill Flag approached us about a worker using Carl Grant monies to be stationed at the museum during work for Carey Medical Center, anticipating this person to help open the museum for longer hours, in the morning, we jumped at the chance. That's how Dana came to us. This has also brought eighteen hundred dollars in rent money to the general fund because they pay a hundred and fifty dollars to have Dana there. Think about this, with our budget at ten thousand dollars, we've brought in eighteen hundred dollars to the city, that's eighteen percent of our budget. Not bad for volunteers. Later, Bill approached us about Vista workers for the summer. That's similar to Peace Corps but based here in the States. This summer, the museum had two paid interns and a third for the Chamber of Commerce. To say our two interns transformed the museum is not hyperbole. That is not an exaggeration. It has been amazing what those two women have done. They have organized, they've sorted, they've cleaned out, they've consolidated and made fresh, rather tired galleries, display cases, exhibits, and even got a good start in the basement. And if you've ever been in the basement, you know what I'm talking about. They have started the work and task that comes with running any entity, but it is only a start. There is so much more that needs to be done. To continue the momentum, started this summer, are paid employees necessary to help grow the museum and handle the day-to-day needs and expectations. If any situation sho- excuse me, showed how this entity, the Nylander, could continue to grow in all ways and become a cultural center of Caribou, it was having these two paid interns. They truly were amazing, and they got a lot done. We need them back. Most important, we are volunteers running a city department, we are not paid employees, but all responsibilities and day, daily tasks are ours to oversee. We have all the responsibilities and none of the authority. Everything that needs to be done, we do, including asking for help. Sometimes there's a quick response. Most times we are put off, or it takes multiple times. We need supplies, we need repairs, we need, uh, we need to respond to an outdated security system, heating fuel, respond to all types of questions from all sources, we're the ones who are doing it. As volunteers, we are advocates for the city and its cultural history. We are ambassadors for the town and as marketing and economic development. Please respect our efforts. You may not agree with the mission of the museum, but we expect our work, time, and success. We have improved not only the standard of living in the city, but also the quality of life. Um, I can go into all the different assorted activities, including our theme weeks, the mini-camps, the speakers, the artist gallery, which is going over, well, I'm not gonna bore you. Some of you are already bored, I'm not going to do even more. You are?
Yes.
Oh, no! Come on! So, economic development, as many visitors have explored the museum because of word of mouth, the Facebook page, or it is a natural history museum. There are actually societies out there that go visit natural history museums and then report back to them. Many have asked for information for eateries and places to stay, along with where to purchase supplies and food. We are also asked to recommend other places to visit. We include the library. Yay! The rec center, trails, including ATV, sledding, skiing, and snowshoeing, where to swim, other... Where to swim, other museums, the Collins Pond Walk, the river, where to paddle and fish, places to hunt, and where to shop. Up there is a woman. And we are all going to get to see her and interact with her tomorrow. You want someone to be an advocate for STEM? So is the Nylander. Science, technology, all of that comes from the Nylander Museum of Natural History. It is part of our culture. One of you gentlemen was saying that you've heard a lot about taxes. I've heard a lot about why isn't there more to do? Yeah, I'm not talking outdoor things. I'm talking about culture. If we wanna go for dinner at the theater, if we wanna go to a concert, if we wanna go to any place, where do we go? We go to Prescott Isle, we go to O and O, we go to Bangor, we go to Portland, we go to Boston. And all that money is not staying here. That's why I'm so thrilled with what Bill Flag is doing with the CPAC. We finally have some of these things coming back so that when my husband and I get together with other couples, we're having dinner here. And then we're going to a cultural event. We have been told how many times, they are, people are so happy that we are doing these events for children. Sorry Gary, it's not just all recreation, it's not all parks, but it's also STEM. So, a part-time employee of 20 hours, being paid about 12 hours a week, is 240 hours for that week. Times that by 52 weeks equals about $12,500. We could have it open in the afternoon, we could draw in the kids with programs after school. There's a lot that can be done that would add to the value of this community. So, I was not able to access this, these numbers until today when I went in on and looked at the packet. Thank you, City Clerk. So, we are not asking for a whole lot. I believe our biggest expense is office supplies. Is that where it is?
Well, the biggest expense proposed would be the part-time employee. And that's, the request was for $25,000 to be able to provide a part-time employee there.
And we cut it back to 15.
That's, yeah. I mean, if you're gonna go back to a 12 hour, or $12 an hour part-time employee, you would be down about 15, $16,000 with, probably closer to 17 with, with all the benefits they would give.
If it's part-time, why do they need benefits?
Well, you have social security and, and a worker's comp and those things, so, yeah.
Good point. Thank you.
It's not direct benefits to the employee, but things we have to pay for.
Okay. The biggest one is office supplies. And this is something that has frustrated board members. We are buying supplies for our theme weeks and for our mini camps. And it looks like we have a surplus in some of these areas when we have not paid ourselves back from our budget. Now that we're going into November, we will be submitting those expenses. So, that's what I have to say, except for thank you for including us this year in the budget planning. We appreciate that. Any questions? Besides ongoing. Pardon?
Any questions?
I would, I would add that they've, they've gone through a walkthrough of the museum, not, not necessarily from the safety aspect, from just from a maintenance aspect. And they've identified several elements that we really should be looking at. A sprinkler system that's not charged. There's no sump pump in the basement of that building. So there's, there is a proposed increase to their budget just for building maintenance purposes. So, something else that we need to be mindful of.
Pretty, pretty basic things.
It is. It is. Yeah, one of the board members was on deck, I believe, Saturday. And I'm not sure whether it's up there, Dennis.
Which one?
Fire alarms.
Yes.
It is up there?
Yes.
Smoke alarms, as well as the carbon dioxide. Okay. Cause he has a whole list of things that need to be done. And these are things that just haven't been done because we haven't noticed they needed to be done because we've been busy keeping it open. No questions? Okay, are y'all asleep or you're all wide awake now? Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Tax assessing. Dennis?
So the council asked to have this looked at again. In looking at the numbers, really, the difference of cost between last year's budget and this year's really is the part-time employee that's being proposed for the department that would help them out with the, again, talking about the quarterly review process during the annual assessing updates. And Penny's proposed that it be a part-time 20-an-hour a week individual. And I think I have more than 20 hours a week in here. I think she was looking at just the summer months, but I have it 20 hours a week year, year round. So there could be some reduction there as far as those wages. But really, that's the difference between last year's budget and this year is, is that part-time person.
So is he okay? Next one, health and sanitation.
So, health and sanitation, the, this is a very small department as far as line items are concerned. We do have a small stipend in here for our, our health officer, which is $500 in the year. The biggest expense is the tri-community landfill or the Aristic Waste Solutions landfill. The costs that we have in the budget, the way they do that is they do a rolling three-year average based on how many tons we are putting over there. And so this last year, we have had quite a bit going over from the Bird's Eye site. I would say that the, the school project is tracked separately. It does not, it's not part of these numbers. And the school district is paying for all of their demolition debris that's going over. But we do expect that there will be a slight increase to that three-year average next year. And so we'd be going from roughly $249,000 to $252,000. Not, not much. Sort of the nice thing about averages is it keeps the spikes down a little bit. And a slight, there's just a small amount in there as far as the social security related to the health officer wages.
Any questions on the health and sanitation, council? Public? Thank you. So, contributions.
So, contributions. Last year, the council authorized $4,600 going toward the Aristic Agency on Aging. We receive requests every year for different amounts of money from ACAP, Aristic Agency on Aging, cemetery funds. Right now, I have a placeholder in here to continue the, the funding to the Aristic Agency on Aging. They, they do provide a lot of benefits to our residents. And we've been given several presentations over the last little while, and they're, they've even offered to come in and share that same presentation with the council to help you have a better understanding of all the services that they provide. But for right now, I've, I've included that amount again in the budget.
Any questions on the contribution? Move to unclassified?
So with the unclassified funds, the refunds and reimbursements, it's, it appears like it's a very small amount of, of money. And then maybe I'm gonna lean on Carl a little bit with this one, but there's a lot of ins and outs with this account. So at the end of the year, it's, it's a very small amount, but there is quite a bit that goes in and out of that one as far as reimbursing refunds. The tax lien costs annually, we, it, it's been going down a little bit. It's actually kinda stayed about the same, but every year, we have to send out tax lien notices to properties that don't pay their taxes. And it floats about $20,000. The abatements. This is, the authorization for abatements comes really in two ways. One is from the, the Board of Assessing, that they look at if somebody's taxes need to be abated and how much. Also, at the end of the year, we'll look at if there's any funds left in this line that we can apply to bad debt, in a sense, or taxes, taxes that we haven't been able to collect for many, many years, and we're probably never likely going to collect. We can use some of these funds to help write that off of our books. And so, we're proposing this year to, to have that at $20,000. We, when we went through the meal rate process back in June, we, we cut it down from what was, I believe it was $20,000 last year again, but we cut it down to $90,000 just to, to cover us through our expenses the rest of this year. But the, we do have several accounts with past due taxes that we need to just start cleaning off. And so, we're proposing to put $20,000 back in there for that. Well, if Carl, you wanna add anything to those?
Just refund and reimbursement. What happens with like sales of properties, you'll have the taxpayer pay the taxes and possibly the mortgage company pay the taxes, so that happens, instead of applying it to the next year, the mortgage company usually wants it back. So we run it through that line, so it's an in and outs, or cheesy because of public payments.
Go ahead, Joe.
On the, on the tax lien costs, I mean, I understand we have to, we slowly get that back. For example, we have to, somebody pay their taxes today for the, for three years, I assume, so we, but it's slowly.
Most of that is postage, so we have to certify them out.
Okay, so that's.
So that is, we do apply that to the lien, but it, it could take up to three years to.
Up to three years to, I mean, you have to do it to everybody every year. But eventually, we recover some of that.
Walk me through again. $20,000 tax lien costs. What does that $20,000 buy us?
It's just, it's just a process of putting the lien on the properties. Postage.
Postage costs $20,000, Carl?
No, it's, it's, well, it's 9.85 for certified. We have to sign them certified, so we have.
Well, I, I get that, but there can't be that many people that we put liens on in Caribou to generate $20,000 off a $9 something certified. Can you do some quick math? 900, or 300 times how much?
Do you have to pay the house record in this registry?
And we have to have those recorded as well. That's $19 I recorded and $19 I have discharged. Those are fees that are associated back to the taxpayer of that.
So, the family that just paid their taxes, this, today, on that property we were gonna send off, they paid all the costs that we incurred for that?
Yes. Interest, costs, and the principal tax.
Who do we register the liens to, again?
Our landlord's needs and all.
It costs us $19 every time?
To record it and to discharge it, so it's actually 30.
Each, each year, right? We do this, I mean, so in a three-year, there's.
After three years, yes.
But it's not one, it's each year, it's a lien, or out of the three?
By the end, I understand.
So, three years before we end up taking the property, but is there three processes involved, including the lien, or is it just once after the one year?
No, we lien it every year.
Every year?
Because they could possibly pay the oldest year, but the next year, they're going to lien.
Is there anything that mandates us from the state to say this is how much we can charge, and we can't go over this?
Right, we get a.
What is it?
I think we, so $3 the man, so we charge them.
No, no. So we have to, we have all these costs that we incurred, and we're tying up taxpayers' money.
We don't incur it. We charge it back to the customer.
Yeah, but it could take three years, Carl. Could take four, could take however many. Is there anything that the state says, this is how much we can charge? We can't charge them double for having to use our money?
So charge them $40 instead of 19.
Yeah. Charge them 120. I don't care. But we're tying up.
They allow us to charge 9%.
And that's the highest we can go is 9%? Are we doing that? We are. I just, again, I'm just trying to understand all this. And if we're tying up our money, I don't like that. You know, we, we've got better things like fixing a river road or whatever.
Curbs.
Curbs, you know? A roof on the fire station.
We do get it back. It just takes time.
More books. Okay.
Hey, any questions on the unclassified? Thank you, and now we'll go to, like, I don't know, have we covered all the capital improvements already, or?
No, we haven't. And actually, we need to jump back up if we can to the general assistance. This again is one of the smaller funds that we have.
Well, it's, it's pretty modest here. I have a hard time seeing that. I've been, someone's offered me their glasses multiple times here. I do know that there needs to be a change on the tracker system. There is 960 in there, if you can see it, the equipment maintenance, and that needs to be 1,200. That's the software program that we use and that allows us to be a paperless general assistance office. We have very little expenses other than the aid to needy people in Caribou and Connor Township. And of course, the employees' wages. You've got the benefits being taken out of that account, and there's a small amount in there for training, 300, I think. And a conference fee in there of 300. And office supplies, pretty much. That's postage, and I get one calendar to make my appointments in.
Any questions on the general assistance?
Jane, can you briefly describe the role as far as the disbursement that we make? The $25,000 that we recommended, we had $29,500 last year, but how much of that do we get reimbursed from the state?
Well, if we spend 20, 25,000, it's, that, it's 30, 70. The state reimburses us 70%. So, if I spend $1,000 for the city, we would get reimbursed 70, some dollars, right? We get reimbursed if someone gets SSI, they have become disabled, and it will, I get notification from DHHS, and they'll tell me the client and the timeframe that I can go. And I do a spreadsheet every month, so it's very easy for me to go back many years to find the time period and how much we actually paid for that client during the timeframe given to me by the state. We had one gentleman this year, he, he must have fallen outside the time. We had one gentleman this year, he, he, um, must have fallen outside the timeframe, but he got his disability, and he paid us back over five thousand dollars on his own, over a period of about four months. So, I mean, he, that didn't get taken out of their ret, his retro, he volunteered to do that, and I, I did the spreadsheet, and he agreed, and like I said, he paid. Um, we haven't had any Connor clients for two years, so we earned forty-eight hundred dollars for Connor, that's four hundred dollars a month for revenue. So when you're looking at revenues, um, that's a pretty sweet deal, it's forty-eight hundred dollars, and I'm not spending any time on Connor clients, okay? Now, that has not changed, the forty-eight hundred dollars has not changed over the years, it's been the same amount since about the early nineties. I checked this out because DHHS approached us at least twice, and even when Carl was in Woodland, they wanted Woodland to do, um, Connor Township at twenty-five dollars an application. Right? I remember you telling, you tell, he told me that.
I don't remember.
So, um...
I remember the conversation, but I don't remember.
Yes. We have a good deal. Um, I, a year ago, uh, down there, the person head of, uh, general assistance at DHHS came and said, if you look at the reimbursements of what get paid to administer the program, Connor in Caribou, it's out of whack compared to the others, and I just said to the gentleman, I'm a tw, I am, um, available twenty-four seven. You're paying for coverage, forty-eight hundred dollars for me to be available twenty-four seven, and I am, I'm available, um, by phone, um, all around the clock, meaning with the police contact me, I contact the client. So, anyway, I don't give out my number, and I block it, but the police have my number. And somebody else got my number, okay. But anyway, I'm just saying, forty-eight hundred dollars we get for revenue, and we haven't had a client for more than two years, so, um...
You guys gotta stop picking on Jane, you know? You really do.
We'll miss her when she's gone.
Jane, I, I'm, I'm sorry.
They're not bothering me, they're gonna work a little harder at it. So anyway, uh, I'm not the fire chief, and I don't have as big revenues, but forty-eight hundred dollars is forty-eight hundred. Um, it is, I've told the manager that this is a job that I, I wish I no longer had.
For forty-eight hundred dollars?
I know, I wish I didn't do general assistance.
We all have your number.
Yeah. I know you're teasing me, but, uh, the, I don't want this job of general assistance any longer. This is, um, it's tied, I'm the only one who can do it, right now, there is no one else can do general assistance, no one's trained to do it, I have to be available.
That's gonna postpone your retirement, isn't it?
It also makes it difficult to take any vacation time, so, anyway, I have no, I have no one to fill in for right now, and to be honest, it's so busy in the clerk's office, there's no time to teach anybody on how to do general assistance. General assistance is, it doesn't take as much time as, um, as it once did, but, um, it does need to have somebody in here to know what to do. These costs used to be a lot higher than thirty, um, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. When I took over, and I ain't bragging, but it was a hundred and forty-nine thousand for out-of-pocket costs for the city helping clients. That was the last year, two thousand and ten, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, so...
Is this something that the city has to provide?
Yes, every town in the ta, in the state of Maine has a general assistance program. It could be administered by the selectmen, it could be done by myself, it's not uncommon to see clerks do general assistance, if I go to training, I might see the same people there. I did it before I came to work for the city of Caribou, I did it for eleven years.
I would, I would note that we, we have had discussions with Prescott about sharing general assistance, people. They have a situation over there where they're unionized, and, um, they're, they're getting flak within the union about sharing responsibilities and things that are there, so, we're, we have been exploring some options as far as that.
Jane, when are you retiring?
I'm retiring, um, next summer, sometime in August, probably.
So it would stand to reason that we, as a council, with you, Dennis, we start planning ahead, 'cause once Jane's gone, then, I mean...
We've already been doing that, we've, we've already hired a thirty-hour person to help out in this office, and we've been doing training, and, uh, we have in the budget an overlap period, yeah.
How many people are in that office right now?
I have myself, another full-time, and the thirty-hour-a-week person started last Tuesday, so, uh, that individual got a draw today and did her first cash transaction, um, but it's...
Three, again.
So, but, it's not full-time, it's thirty hours a week, but I have no general assistance person, and if anybody's listening out there, I'll tell you, my sister died this summer, and that was the issue, as to whether or not I could leave the work to take that time for her death. And so, um, it needs to be done. Something needs to be done with general assistance, and I'm televising that over the air. But that was an issue that I talked to Dennis the day she passed away, I, if I go next week, who's gonna do general assistance?
Did you go?
She wasn't buried for two weeks, I had, I took one day, the day before she was buried, so I was there the following week to do general assistance. Kim, over in for, and Prescott, Martin, um, Puckett, um, he agreed to let her to come over. She did come over to, to look at the program, but Kim, she works on a clerk's office, or on the front counter, like I do, and, um, Kim is very knowledgeable when it comes to general assistance, and it's very unfortunate that this is not working out, 'cause that was what I thought the solution would be, is to have Kim. Her and I have, uh, similar styles when it comes to handling, uh, general assistance and the responsibility placement on our, on our clients, 'cause they do have responsibilities, and it is unfortunate she's not able to do it. I would have been able to work well with her, and she's all trained, so...
Again, we looked at the shared opportunity there, they gave us a quote for the time plus benefits, and looked at things that we could hire and understand, and, uh, pretty just in the rest cost of what we, what Prescott would be charging us, that shared resource. The hope is that, uh, the first of the year, uh, this thirty-hour person may be able to provision one hours in the office and help out with that.
Does MMA have anything to help out, any kind of...
Trainings?
Well, the clerks, not the clerk, but the Welfare Association has training, um, they're not as common as clerk training, you, there's a basic, advanced, and then they have a spring conference, and, um, I've done all three. So those are available for training, but basic and advanced are, they also have one called Winter Issues, which I've never attended because it's held during the winter downstate, so I have my own winter issue trying to get there, but, um, so, uh, uh, there is training, it's probably two events, um, for basic and two events for advanced a year. The conference is usually held in Bangor or in Freeport, so it's a, it's, it is a, uh, major event to go down there.
So you see, the, the proposed or the recommended amount for training is two hundred, I, I've actually increased that to five hundred dollars to help out with the submission training and general assistance.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
I wish I could tell you that there was some other, um, individual in the area that could do general assistance, you know, someone in Florida, but where we're one of the larger communities, and the other large community is unable to assist, I'm just not sure, um, what's out there, because it's really a part-time job now. It's not a full-time job, there used to be a full-time job for general assistance, it's part-time, two days a week, but I am screening, I mean, I had two calls, I, I, I have had calls, um, today, several calls, having to do with tomorrow and Thursday. Uh, so it's not just being Tuesdays and Thursdays when I have the appointments, I, I'm screening, I'm, I am returning calls, I'm making appointments for my clients, and it, I do it every day, and I do get calls at home, from the police.
So I just wanna point out that the salaries in this particular line, this is split between two employees spending part of their time with GA.
It has been historically, um, thirty percent of my wages and fifteen percent of my deputy. I, I don't know if that's reflected in there now. That was a lot more than I planned to spend on.
That's fine, that's what we're here for. Back to finishing up capital improvements, that's where we're at next, I believe, we've covered a few.
So, yep, uh, just wanna jump back up to the top of this, um, so currently, last year, we had, in twenty twenty, a roughly fifty thousand dollar item for studying the potential, uh, sharing of resources between CUD and Caribou Public Works Department. I think we've got a bigger fish we're looking at as far as the police station, and so, that study I've moved into the future, we'll, we'll just take a look at that in the future when we, when it becomes a more, uh, serious issue. I have currently in the budget, in the capital budget, ninety-five thousand for the study and design of the new police station, City Hall. The, the architectural firms that we're looking at, they, they did submit our cost estimates for us as far as getting us through an election, as far as getting to an election, getting a number, and being able to vote on it. The, there would be additional costs associated with the design of the police station, and actually creating the final plans and going to construction, uh, but this ninety-five thousand is, is kind of on the high end of the architects that we're looking at to get us through an election next year, uh, next, uh, November. One of the architects, uh, was indicating that they could probably get information to us for June election, if the council wanted to pursue that, but, you know, nevertheless, it's, it's in the budget right now, is that amount, just to look at some of those costs that the council is looking for. Uh, one of the, the big items that we have, uh, we have, uh, funds that we took from the Arustic Waste Solutions hangout last year to pay for the streetlight program, and it was anticipated that we would pay back those funds, uh, so, right now, I'm showing forty-two thousand dollars in the next four years to, no, it's like next six years, actually, uh, in order to pay back those funds for the streetlight program. That, I know that Councilor Don was talking about utilizing some of those funds to, to build up an actual, actual rainy day account, and so, while we're showing as, as a capital expense here, it's, it's more just a matter of, oh, we're raising the revenues, and we need to start building up that fund. So, it's, right now, it's, it's showing as repaying those amounts, but those amounts could be put into a reserve if they wanted to, if they wanted to. And we've already talked about the fire station, as far as general government is concerned, we have, uh, we have some computers that are, are near four or five years old, that are, are churning, as I would say, on a mouse wheel, uh, comparatively, and so we're looking to replace some of those. Uh, we also, uh, we have a couple of vehicles that need to be replaced in the next couple of years, and so we're starting to put money aside for that, uh, fourteen thousand dollars toward a new vehicle. The library, uh, the library is not actually asking for more capital funding this year, they have money already set aside in reserve for this improvement to the, the building, basically going to the Carnegie side of the building and redoing the, the surfaces on that.
Windows.
Windows.
Okay.
And that includes the new windows and painting, the trandem, and all that, I mean, we're gonna do that this year, but, um, we had so much construction, they were actually still complaining about it last week, construction, we had, and they said, it's a smooth surface now. So, we decided to go ahead and put that off for a little more year, they're not leaking or anything like that, so...
Of the municipal building, uh, we are planning to put aside additional funds for the City Hall and the mall parking lot resurface. We, we were anticipating that the surfaces around the police station in the front of this building would be done this year, it's questionable that's going to happen, uh, but, uh, we also know, since we own the mall parking lots, those are starting to deteriorate, and we need to start putting money aside for that resurfacing work. Uh, we do have currently twenty thousand dollars in reserve to put toward that.
Was, or, we had the money set aside to do this already this year, the...
Yes.
So we're just gonna carry that over, 'cause if it, if it doesn't get done?
It would carry over, but this would be additional funds for the other, other parts of it.
Okay.
Uh, the exterior painting on City Hall, what that is, if, if you go outside and you look at the, the cream parts of the building, uh, it's actually a foundation rub element on the building, it's now starting to crack and fall apart, um, you might think it's just a, a matter of putting paint on it, but it's gonna be more probably stripping that off and redoing the surfacing on it, and so we've, we've got funds in there to, to look at that. Uh, there's also, uh, several places around this building where the sidewalks are creating trip hazards or need to be ripped out and reformed, uh, and I know that there's also the sidewalk is over at the Lions Building to get into the EOC through the basement, that asphalt sidewalk also needs to be looked at, it's, it's pretty rough and tumble, but we do have, we do have some funds in the building, maybe reserved to, to cover those things, but those are some of the projects we're gonna be looking at for next year for the City Hall and Lions Building. As far as the parks facilities are concerned, uh, we're showing twenty-five thousand into additional funds for Teague Park reconstruction, the, we have funds set aside for the splash pad, as, as Gary's talked about, a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yep, it's came in at, well, the cost analysis came in at one twenty-five, that's just the purchase of the equipment, that obviously doesn't ca, uh, cover the cost of putting it in. So I'm working on with Vortex right now, on getting some distances to the building for water and electrical, and they will be able to give me a rough diagram so that we can go out to bid for the contractors and get more of a finalized number, but numbers are looking pretty good, and that I think we will be able to utilize what we have and have everything covered, but I will try to get this done before we set the budget, so that we can, if we have to add, we can add.
Uh, one of the other things that Gary's talked about is with the, with the finishing of Teague Park, uh, you'll see that if you drive by, you have the asphalt that's all down now for the basketball courts, the tennis courts, and...
The new drive.
The new driveways, and what we're starting to bump up against, if you're looking at this aerial photo, this is the rec center on the earth, the, the basketball courts now come in, roughly there.
Yep.
So we're a hundred and twenty-five feet or so. So we're a hundred and twenty-five feet or so from the building with park improvements. And one of the concerns that we have is being able to continue to utilize the overflow parking, as they call it. And the amount of issues that we're having with the mud being tracked all over everything. And would it be better if we just paved that overflow parking area?
And just to add, this area here is going to be a splash pad area. So we're going to have patrons coming out of here, going into an area, walking across mud and gravel and rocks. So Mr. Willett and I got some, figured out what we would need for tonnage for paving that area. The cost was just for putting the asphalt down. Public Works would probably have to do the prep work for it. So that's where you see that forty-five-ish thousand dollars to pave that overflow parking lot. To have it all mixed all together, looking similar to the new park in this area. During the marathon, it rained severely hard the day before and it was an absolute mud fest. Mr. Mark was there and we were standing all in mud. And it's just not a, it's not a pretty sight. It's one of the most used buildings in the community. And elections are coming up. If it's raining on Election Day, the inside of the building is just a mess. It's a slip hazard as well. So having that overflow parking lot paved would be a tremendous benefit to that building and that area.
So originally that probably wasn't paved because it wasn't that originally going to be another phase?
That was going to be phase two and phase three.
Which never happened.
I'll retire before that probably happens.
So that's why it probably never got paved at that time because there was
Yeah, it would have made, it would have made no sense to pave that, knowing that
Potentially.
those other phases were going to come in, but it's been eleven years now on phase two, phase three.
Unless you want to capitalize the one and a half million for the
Are there light bulbs at the rec this year?
Oh, you have, I cannot believe you have not been to the rec center.
So I'll have enough light on Election Day?
I can turn all of them off and still play.
Thank you very much. And while you have that up the screen, could you show me what two-hundred-and-fifty feet would be from the door on the side? Nope, on the side.
Yep, that's the shaft.
See what, in that little bend there?
We need to do a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius.
Two-hundred-and-fifty feet?
Two-hundred-and-fifty feet.
Yep. So it puts us over onto the other line, where it'd been the school. So what would that white stuff be up there, Gary?
This?
That there is an old overflow, it's an old driveway to Teague Park.
That's tennis courts now.
That's tennis courts?
Yeah. So that was an old road going into the learning center.
And that is, in behind there is also going around in the back. That's like public stuff right there. It's the
That's the national
No, no, no.
The building.
The building is National Guard building.
Okay, so that we can block that too. Okay. What would be two-hundred-and-fifty out of the back door? Back door, right there. Yeah, but you include that National Guard.
So the fence, National Guard fence are about a hundred feet?
Can I ask what the two-hundred-and-fifty feet is?
Oh, it's the regulations on the political signs, I believe.
Yep.
Two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the corner, right?
From any of the doors.
Okay, so go across the street?
Well, that's the school. You can't have that either.
So all the signs that have been across the street?
They won't be there Election Day.
They can't be there all much.
They start just on the other side of that white line above where Jane had asked about the learning center, which is now city, is going to be city property. From there, almost all the way down to, just past Irving is sign free. And you'll see it. They'll put it at two-hundred-and-fifty-one feet.
There should be.
Well, so last year when I put my sign out there, did I break the law? Okay, I was just wondering how long the head start I needed to get?
It's Election Day and then there weren't any signs for Election Day. I just thought, well, Mr. Mark had that up there measured. I'm not trying to tell you where to put your signs, but Connor Electric, Connor Electric, I can't prevent you from putting signs here. It's private property.
Okay, the other thing we've got is, again, putting fifty thousand dollars toward Collins Pond improvements. That's not anticipated next year, but probably the year after that. And so for the next two years, trying to put at least a hundred thousand dollars together to help with the rebuilding of the pond and making improvements around that. The police department. The big item there, they were able to find, well, they found out that whenever they replaced the cruisers now, it's gone up from what was about forty thousand dollars to now forty-three thousand dollars for the cruisers. And in the future years, we show that continuing to escalate. Forty-five thousand dollars for the next two years after that, just as for planning purposes.
Is that just a replacement of the car or is that the, with the equipment and everything in it?
With equipment.
That's a little full package.
Yes. The CAD software, this is the dispatch software that they have and the case tracking software. We've been working with Utah County and thankfully Ryan Pelletier has worked with the county commissioners. The county has agreed to buy all of the police departments in the county this CAD software. We were looking at it, our cost actually would have been closer to a hundred thousand dollars. I left twenty thousand in there as a placeholder because we'll still have to do some server focusing and annual maintenance cost. But the county, so you will see a bump in the county request this year in order to buy all the software. But it will make it so that all of the police departments can
They're going to pay for yours?
No.
So they're only going to pay for police? Because police need one, fire need one?
This is police.
This is just police they're paying and they're going to bump our taxes, do it?
So that
Wonderful plan. What a wonderful plan.
I give up. I give up. Come on.
Is it so they can help? Like they're all in the same system though, so if there was an issue, an active shooter, then everybody would hear it and everybody?
No, you still have to call them.
You still call them, but the system, the software enables everybody to be on the same case management database, basically. You don't have a seamless connection between all the records.
Basically Nicole was the active shooter. They would know here that Nicole was an active shooter or wherever. It would all be tied together.
Okay. And then then
Once it works off the fire side, like Prestal Fire, we would, same building. Every time the PD goes to a residence, it comes up on FireCAD or the fire goes, it comes up on PoliceCAD. It's all ties back in together so they know what they're getting into.
Just to see if there's a silver lining on Tom's concern, if county EMS is buying it, would that mean communities are going to be contributing to that that otherwise wouldn't be?
Right.
That cost?
Well, but their cost actually would, I'm still looking for the fine details in it, but I believe our only cost would be the annual maintenance cost of the software. The real heavy blow is that initial purchase.
Which if we had to bear the burden of it, New Sweden, Stockholm, they're not contributing. But because Rousta County EMS is paying for it, now they're contributing.
Yes. The whole county's going to be paying for it. There is currently a negative balance for their vehicles and that's again because they, this last vehicle they purchased and equipped was higher in cost than anticipated, so we need to balance that line. We are, with our streetlights program, we're going to have our annual maintenance costs. But we anticipated that at some point in the future, there's going to have to be a replacement program. And so what this is proposing is fifteen thousand dollars a year is that we start building up that replacement egg that we're going to need down the road. It's not much now, but if we continue to do this, we'll be able to have the funds in place that we need to when we the newest technology comes out, that's twenty years down the road or thirty years down the road. We'll have funds set aside to, we won't have to worry about, do we have a one-time fund coming in to help pay for this transition? We've talked about public works already. With recreation. Gary, you want to touch on those three items?
We have a current security camera system, but the quality is so poor that we have to figure out what they're wearing for clothes before we can even talk to them. It's just, it's a poor quality system. Got two price quotes. This was the cheaper of the two. And this would be an upgrade. We'd be able to utilize all the same wiring that's already throughout the building, some new cameras. And with today's, and with a couple extras as well in some spots that we don't currently monitor. So we all, you know, there's always people in the building. There's always something that happens. We refer back to the cameras quite a bit and the quality is so poor that if we don't know what they're wearing for clothes, we don't know who they are. So we're working on that. We've got two new computers that we got to replace due to the mandates on the, what is it, Windows seven? So we got to do two new computers. Hardware on the gym doors, these are three, four sets of doors in the gym and one of the lobbies. From day one, the hardware was not the greatest hardware installed in the building. We've got to replace these doors. People have a hard time to open them up. We've replaced the main entrance doors several, several years ago. They work well. And that's the price quote as of a couple of weeks ago. It's expensive. I'd like to be able to at least do two next year and then do the two sets the year after instead of doing all four. But if the council wishes to do all four, all four sets, we can definitely do that.
We did a safety tour of the rec center and walked over to, I guess it would be the southeast door in the gym. It's supposed to be locked and Gary demonstrated, if you push on it hard enough, it just opens.
In the meantime, we are going to, we are going to come up with a system to be able to at least secure it at night. That's not going to affect anything for fire reasons and stuff like that. But it's just at nighttime when the staff has trouble sometimes closing that door. I get the phone call at nine-thirty at night, they're been pounding on the door. I got to come down and do it for them. Let them for the night and then first thing in the mornings, our generators are there. One of them is there at four-thirty. He'd go, first thing they would do is go and open them. So when people are there, there's going to be no issues. It would just be that secure time from nine o'clock at night till four-thirty in the morning. And that is an easy fix, but the doors or the hardware themselves need to be replaced.
With tax assessing, we've had in the budget in previous years, a dollar amount to be set aside toward the one and ten-year expense of a revaluation. This year, if the council moves forward with the part-time employee in that department, we wouldn't need to put the forty-three thousand dollars into the capital side. And so that's, right now I'm showing that as a blank because it's being reflected into the wage side. We do have to, again, look at a computer. The software that Penny needs would have a very difficult time functioning on her current computer in order to do the revaluation process. And I'm not sure how old that thing is. It's probably, again, five years old.
Had too many windows open at one time, so they just died one day and Bob brought another one in. Probably five years.
The last item on there, the plotter scanner, what we're looking at there is, again, just putting money aside this year and doing a purchase next year. Making it so that we can print off large-scale maps and plans, tax maps. We can be replacing those. We can also scan large documents into our GIS system. And so that's what that last item is. It's not necessarily a critical feature to the operations. Definitely it would help at times, but it's not a critical element that we would have to have. Currently, if we need a large map printed off, we can call over to the county or even NBC and they'll print off large-scale maps for us. It's a timing thing, a convenience thing. And the last thing to just show with the capital. So this graph will show, kind of illustrate for you what we're looking at. So two thousand eighteen and nineteen, we, or say the council authorized amounts totaling about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The requests this year are almost one-point-two million. And because of looking into the future, twenty-twenty-two, we could be almost one-point-six in capital. Going to have to look at a new projector for capital, one that's focusing better, but throw them in front of the lens if you will. So that, again, that's really with the capital, there's some of those, we could maybe, again, look at, can we move those into future years? But some of this is, are just building maintenance issues that we really need to just get addressed and taken care of. So the years, the two years after that though, we'd be looking at very similar leaps to one-point-six million by twenty-twenty-two and one-point-five million twenty-twenty-one. Overall, currently, the total budget that we're looking at compared to last year, current expenses, we're looking at one-point-two million, almost one-point-three million more than last year's expense budget. And the bulk of that coming from the capital and the increases in benefits that we're looking at. Right now we've got a ten percent increase in health insurance that we're looking at. Still waiting for the final number from them. We did get notice that workers' comp is going up twenty-four percent.
Is that just going up or is that because of claims or is it just going up twenty-four percent?
It's a combination of, they look at the total payroll, they look at the claims and based on the pool. And they said for Caribou, it needs to go up twenty-four percent for workers' comp. So I know Councilor Kirkpatrick and I just ran into each other earlier today and we were talking about health insurance. And Arustic Way Solutions, they're looking at an option this year to where some of their employees would be, they would fund a direct care option. The Phoenix Healthcare that we have here in Caribou now in the mall area. They can provide basic care services at almost a third the cost. But they don't cover, you know, if you have to go to the emergency room and for a broken bone, they don't do that there. But something we can look at, probably not for next year, but the year after that is with main municipal, can we help them develop a high-principle, high-deductible plan that would lower the cost for those emergency services or higher functioned services? But we can maybe go with the primary care with Phoenix Healthcare and save some of our cost. They indicate they can provide all of the same They, they indicate they can provide all of the same basic, you know, physicals and checkups and those things right there in that office.
A lot of private companies are doing that. Think we should check it out sooner rather than later.
So they, with the health, uh, benefits that we provide, we are tied within our union contracts, and if we're going to change health benefits, we have to pull together what's called a health benefit committee with representatives from each of the unions and administration to talk about all the options. In two thousand eighteen, we got that group together, and we looked at healthcare providers and even put out to bid our healthcare, and we only had one company that bid on the services, which is our current provider, which is main municipal. But with Phoenix Direct being in town, it certainly gives us another option. It can't be our only option, because then you leave your employees hanging out to dry if something major comes up, but hopefully we can work over the next year to see if we can maybe find, even if it's not main municipal, maybe there's another health insurance provider that is willing to provide a high-deductible plan that could save us costs with direct care. But certainly, you know, when you look at a ten percent increase this year, and maybe even more next year, uh, every year, healthcare's gonna continue to go up, so we need to start looking at other options.
Side everything.
Go to the preliminary revenue forecast.
Currently, we've assumed that the, the valuation of the city is not going to go up, and the property taxes would be the same. We, that's a very big assumption, and I'll, I'll get to that in a minute, but, uh, overall, our operational revenues, things that we, we get for a permit here or there, uh, we, we project those going down slightly. The excise tax, we, that's continuing to go up, people are buying newer cars and they're coming in and having to pay the excise tax on that, so we, we project a little bit of an increase with excise tax. The, uh, boats, anyways, as, as you go down through it, you'll see that most of these have negative values on them. We, we're losing population a little bit, and so that affects how many people are actually registering some of their, their toys. So...
So, numbers are affected by online registrations.
One of the biggest bumps in revenue under general government is the state revenue sharing. We are, we're looking, uh, because of the, the governor's budget, we are going from, uh, what was, two percent last year to two and a half percent this year, or three percent revenue sharing next year, so we are going to...
Zoom in, I, we didn't have this in our packet, so we're trying to follow along. Is it? So that's what... I don't see it.
Nicole doesn't have it.
Yeah, I, this is, this is what I'm looking at, and it's not as broken down as...
Yeah, so I, I sent you the summary revenue. This is all good. And I, I intended to send you the spreadsheet, and I sent you the wrong spreadsheet, but I will, I'll make sure that you get this spreadsheet tonight, I'll send it out so you can play with numbers.
In some cases there, it's like eight hundred dollars or something for, for boats, I mean, it, they're tiny, tiny little numbers for a lot of them.
Uh, I guess I was saying, the biggest change is the state revenue sharing, uh, will be going from, it's estimated seven hundred and forty thousand dollars at the end of this year to closer to nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so that's, it'll be a good boost for us that way. Uh, the other lines are staying close to the same, we're not talking huge dollar amounts, as Jane pointed out. The cable TV franchise, uh, we project that's gonna be going down based on, uh, the, the FCC rulings and trying to deal with that, so trying to finalize the, the franchise agreement with them. The, uh, property taxes, again, assume those basically stay the same. The, uh, property tax overlay, we're still, we're still putting some of these numbers in, obviously, the investment interest stays about the same, ninety-one thousand, those are our, our biggest ones. The health and sanitation, last year, we, we captured a hundred and seventy thousand dollars from those one-time funds as, as revenue to help offset some of the expenses. I'm not showing use of those one-time funds right now for, uh, helping with the revenue, so that, when those funds come in this, it'll actually hit in January, it'll be another three hundred and forty thousand dollars of one-time funds, but right now, we just anticipate it's coming, and as the council, we need to figure out what you wanna do with those one-time funds for next year. The municipal buildings, uh, that's our rent that we get every year, four thousand dollars, that doesn't really change. General assistance, one of the reasons why I asked Jane to walk through how that program would work was so you'd understand where these numbers come from. So there's our forty-eight hundred dollars for the corner assistance, and the state reimbursement is that seventy percent of what we budgeted for expense, basically. Tax assessing, there's been quite a few changes in the tax assessing world for next year. One, the homestead exemption is increasing, but we're also, and so what's gonna happen is you'll see a slight decrease in our property tax, but we're gonna be making up for it in the homestead reimbursement amount. The state, they recognize that it was a way to provide some tax relief, but they didn't want to burden the cities with that loss of funds, so they also bumped up the amount that they would reimburse us for the homestead exemption. Betty reimbursement fluctuates each year based on the, uh, the commercial businesses' application for those funds, and Penny and Tony, they, they went above and beyond this last tax season, talking to businesses and going out and visiting them face-to-face, helping them fill out their Betty reimbursements, so that... So what happens with that, just a quick explanation, is the businesses will claim a piece of equipment that's maybe brand-new to the state, and then they become tax-exempt on that property tax, and that personal property tax. The state logs that, and then they send us sixty percent of that value, so even though they're not paying taxes for it, the state is paying us for the commercial claiming of that property under the Betty program. Is that simple?
Fifty-three percent.
Fifty-three percent, okay. Well, simplify that one quite a bit. The trade growth and veterans exemption, right now, we're just, we're leaving that the same. Is there any changes with those programs, Penny, that you're aware of?
Not right now, but our veteran exemption seems to be going down every year, they have the number.
Not the tax breaks itself, but the actual amount of, of veterans in the city.
Yeah, that are claiming an exemption.
Code enforcement, this is our, pretty much our building department, and we, we try to be a little conservative with this, we, we've already received the, the one-time funds from the RSU projects with regards to their, their plumbing permit that they got, um, and so you see, we, we keep those pretty low. Uh, this year, we expect it will be in higher than budget, uh, with the plumbing permits, building permits, uh, we have, uh, with assigned permits, we have more than we anticipated this year. But again, pretty even keel with, with code enforcement. Library's gonna do a major fundraiser and bring in twenty thousand dollars extra this next year.
From your lips to God's ears.
But, uh, the, the library has been able to, uh, just pretty much by the donation jar on the counter, bring in quite a bit of money.
Um, our miscellaneous income is like all of our copies and our faxes, that's predominantly what we do, we also have, if you order in your library loan book, if it comes from out of state, um, we don't pay for them to ship it to us, but we pay to ship it back, so if it's two dollars ninety-five cents, we round it up to three. Um, so that's those little, if you need a new card, 'cause you washed yours, it's a dollar, that's what the miscellaneous income is, and then the non-resident fees are just that.
Do you take donations of used books that we could...
Do, and we have a book sale, we always try to look through our...
I got a ton.
Oh, bring it, next month is our book sale.
Okay.
Um, that information is going out tomorrow to every place, but we try to put anything in our collection that we can, um, and then the rest goes into our book sale, and, um, we bring in a couple hundred twice a year on that.
I'll give you an infusion here, a regular infusion.
Thank you, we would appreciate it, but the non-resident fees, we, that kinda goes up and down a little bit based on who moves into town, that's out of town, and, um, and then I notice Dennis has passport services, we are seriously considering, I mean that again, um, it takes federal training, so...
Hey, maybe with you would also share, how is the bookstore working out?
Oh, yeah, our bookstore, we have, we have our, our bookstore goes into our memorial fund, and our memorial fund for the library is, people come and they, and they say, "I wanna donate, I, I wanna donate twenty-five dollars, um, in this person's name, they loved cats." So we try to get books that are about that twenty-five dollars. Some people walk in and say, "We just wanna donate fifty dollars in someone's memory." So we use that fund, our goal is to raise six thousand a year in our memorial fund, so that we can put four thousand away each year, with the thought that in ten years we would have forty thousand, um, and use two thousand, up to two thousand a year for extra stuff. Our budget for programs is seven hundred a year, um, it, that's not a lot, the amount of programming we do, so anything extra comes out of our memorial fund, um, a lot, you know, taking, buying out a, a, this summer for a space, we bought out a planetarium trip, and, um, we had kids that had never been in a planetarium this year, and they got to go and watch a one-hour show. We brought up, um, um, a couple different authors, um, and that, that runs about a hundred and fifty dollars, and so our seven hundred has to go for all of our supplies and everything, and then whatever we go over that, we take out of that, two thousand out of that memorial fund, we, that's our little cushion that we use. So our bookstore sales go into our memorial fund to be used for programming that goes above and beyond the seven hundred that we currently have, um, for that, so we just made galactic slime today. And, you know, it was twenty-three dollars worth of supplies, that will actually do about two more or three more programs of slime of different kinds, but, um, you know, that, we're, we're right at seven hundred for our budget, so we take that out of the memorial fund. So our book sales that we do, our bookstore, um, some days we have twelve dollars in sales, or twenty dollars in sales, some days we have two.
What about music, CDs, and movies? You do, huh?
Yeah. Pretty much anything you can think of that is, that you find in the library, um, yeah, and, and those donations that we have, we have a patron that buys every single Danielle Steele book, that's her love, and it's the first one, and she buys it and she donates to the library. That means the money that we have can be used for somebody else's book who can't afford to buy it, but really loves, you know, James Patterson.
Be cleaning out my drawers in the cupboard.
All right, you bring it on down, bring it on down.
Uh, the fire and ambulance department, uh, they are looking at, because of, again, the legislative changes that Chief Sucey was involved with last year, uh, looking to increase revenues by another almost quarter million dollars. And so, as you look at, at those numbers, and again, I'll, I'll send a spreadsheet out to you, and you can, you can look at all of this back and forth. The top flows here, when you have main care, Medicare, private insurance, um, self-pay, these lines are really predicated upon the coverage that the individual patients have when they're cared for, uh, but generally, we've been looking at the trends, the number of patients having Medicare, main care, and so on, and this obviously could fluctuate. If they have private insurance or self-pay, we're able to get a higher reimbursement amount or a higher payment amount, but, uh, the biggest ones that we're looking at for next year, uh, Medicare, that's the, the state, no, that's the federal, and so, uh, there's a larger number of people on federal, and the state reimbursement rate is going up, and so we're showing additional amounts going in there. The contracts currently that we're looking at with, uh, the provision of services to outside communities, so this is the, the ambulance services per capita fees that we have, and, uh, currently, we're leaving those, uh, the same, but the, no, I'm sorry, this is the fire.
Fire, we stayed the same, main miles per capita, we went up two percent, and we're charging them for all non-transport, so back to what council asked ahead of time, do we lose anything, we won't be losing anything, it's written in the contract, anytime we go to the town, no matter what happens, we're being paid. If they don't come forward on the self-pay, we're charging them back, and if we go and do lift assistance or no transport, we're still charging them a flat fee, covering all of our expenses plus.
So those, uh, those fees have been...
I don't know what those will be, so that, this is a very modest revenue budget, just like this year's was, that we're gonna go by, this is very modest too, but it's using real money.
Based on the trends that we've had in service to those communities. So, uh, again, total, as far as the fire's concerned, uh, last year, it was budgeted at, um, one point four-six million, and this year, we're looking at, uh, budget revenues of one point seven-four million, so...
And what's total expense for fire and ambulance?
Let me go back to it. Total expense, two point four-seven.
So for seven hundred thousand, we're getting a full fire and ambulance. I, I'd call that making money, I mean, I don't know how, how an accountant would do it, but...
It's interesting that Fort Fairfield just voted to start their ambulance service, and the indication is that they're going to be subsidizing that service to the tune of nine hundred thousand dollars a year.
Just shy of nine hundred thousand a year out of revenue, but that's the cost of public safety, Prescott's hiring four more in January to make up for the other areas, and salaries alone, without any other expenses, just salary and benefits will be one point eight million.
Is the work, is the workforce there that I...
Nope. I don't, I don't, that's what they're, they're going with, but they'll, just, just personnel, just, just salaries and benefits is one point eight million, not counting any expenses, and then they're only looking at about a hundred thousand in revenue. But it's, that's what it's gonna turn into if you provide a service now up here.
Police department, excuse me, uh, basically, they're looking at the same revenue budget that they had this year, with that, uh, one of the big items there, the biggest item is the school resource officer that, uh, the school district pays us for, for their services, so, uh, while it shows up as a revenue, it's, it's more of an in and out, but that's what that number is. Emergency management, uh, these, again, just providing services to the outside communities, it's a flat fee, two hundred dollars, giving them for that, it's one of those that you could say, it's one they hope never have to... It's one of those that Chief would say, it's one that he'll never have to, to utilize. Uh, Public Works, uh, doesn't have a lot of revenue lines. The U-RIP L-Wrap program is basically the state's funds that they give us to do maintenance on rural roads. And, uh, I haven't held a date yet, I don't know if that number's going up from what it was this year. It's a contracted amount.
For the, for the U-RIP?
Mm-hmm.
So I filled up the DIP work and wrote it down, and you sent it from his office, but I think it's like a hundred and fifty-three, a hundred and fifty-five.
So maybe I'll increase that a little bit?
How, how much did you have there?
One forty-three.
Yeah, so I scanned that, I can, I can send it to you in a moment.
Okay. And then, uh, we have a contract with Connor for snow plowing services. And I'm not sure, I, I haven't seen the contract for that. What is that number based on, that sixty thousand dollars, is that time that we build in for, or how does that work?
They, uh, so we get, uh, six payments on that, um, and I can't remember, according to the second year of the three-year contract, I'm really not sure where we are in the contract, but it has a, a built-in step increaser, and I think it was like two or two-and-a-half percent.
I think it's based on so much of the law. Per lane, per lane law?
So we do have a certain amount of lane laws, but we're not charging against the lane law, it's just a contract for us to go do that, whatever law we're in.
And not based on snowball? It doesn't?
If, if, if you get a hundred inches, the same price as a hundred.
I'm sure you plowed a lot more last winter than you did the year before.
Yeah, and, but then if you say something to that effect, they'll say, "Well, what about the years we only got a hundred inches?" So, it's supposed to work out, and I guess that.
I, I deal with snowmobile, I'm sure it's not.
Yeah, the, the other thing to remember is, is we're not sending a truck out specifically to go do that. We have a truck that's in that area that just extended its, its run, so, you know, we have somebody doing our Westgate Road and, uh, Matta Wash Road, so. Because we're right there, you know, it'd be different if we had to send a truck to specifically go do that.
Really, Public Works only has the two lines that they generate revenue from, the L-Wrap and the Connor contract for, for snow plowing services. Recreation, uh, they provide, or they give opportunities for you to rent the rec center, and so they do get rental income from there, the program fees. Special events, and, uh, we still have a line for swimming pool fees, I don't know if we wanna create a splash pad rental program or something, but that's, that's pretty hard to, it's gonna be open to the public, it's gonna be hard to quarantine and opt and say, only certain groups could use it, but. So, uh, again, looking at pretty flat for, for next year as far as revenues from the recreation department. Parks, uh, there's just a small amount of miscellaneous income. We've talked about a rental fee for the parks themselves, um, right now, we don't charge for people that want to reserve a, a park for a, a party or something like that, and so currently, that's a zero income. The airports, uh, the airport rent, we did find out last week, we've, when we built the new tee hangers, we were told that until the FAA signs off on that project, any revenues had to go into a reserve account for us to give to the FAA. And so, since we were having the rents, we've been putting those rents into the separate reserve account, and come to find out last week that when we closed out the project, all of that was taken into account, and anything that we have in that reserve now is ours. And so, uh, I don't know if we've moved that over, that wasn't reflected in today's financials, but it will be next month. So, uh, we will see, we'll see an increase in the airport rent for next year. And the, and the fuel revenue, I, the assumption is we're gonna have all of the fuel revenue for next year, similar to what we did this year, so. The trailer park, we're losing trailers out of the park, so those lot rents are, are dropping down a little bit. We don't budget anything for the year-end close process, but, uh, before the end of this year, we'll, we'll be able to say, is there a certain amount of money that we need to, uh, close out the, the park with and set aside for other maintenance projects? Insurance and retirement, uh, these, again, are funds that we don't budget any revenue for, but occasionally, workers' comp will tell us that we've, is it overpaid, or basically that they can give us a disbursement back? From workers' comp.
If the number of claims is less than what they project?
So we, we don't budget the revenue for it, but hopefully, it comes in at the end of the day. Economic development is predicated really upon the, the mill rate that eventually gets set and the TIF districts that we have in place. Projection that that would go up a little bit next year, actually, it would go down as far as the, the total budgeted revenue. The housing, these, uh, economic development, housing, snowmobile trails, and the FSS, basically, their revenues come in to cover their costs. And so housing next year, we're looking to maintain their budget, same way, snowmobile trails, uh, those are some of the state grants that come in. Again, these are basically just cover-your-cost funds, FSS being the same for next year. So total revenues currently being looked at is about ten point five million dollars. And if you compare the, the expenses to the revenues, we are, we're about a million short in difference. I'm looking at that number thinking that's, doesn't look right. So somewhere I'm missing five thousand dollars in the, in the formula.
I have a ten million dollar budget.
You okay with that? So.
Rounding error.
That's the, that's the pennies that couple those lines.
So they, again, they, based on all the expenses that have been turned in, requests, we're, most of this, again, being the capital improvement projects, that's five hundred thousand dollars difference, really. We're, we're looking at a difference of almost a million dollars between our revenues and, and expenses. So this is where the fun starts for you as a council, is to begin looking at what, where the, what are your priorities and where do we start?
Can you go back for just a, a second, on the capital for, for, for fire, did you have two, two hundred and sixty thousand for this year?
So if you, if you move the monitors and the replacement ladder truck into future years, we're looking at two hundred and sixty thousand?
Two sixty, okay. So I, I just wanna correct the record. Counselor Martin said that the difference between expense and revenue was, was making money costing the city, by my number, six hundred and seventy-two thousand. So if you add in the capital, the actual difference is nine thirty-two, one fifty-two. So that's the net cost to the city.
For the fire and the mess department.
Right, and just for the record, that's not making money. Does everyone agree that's not making money? Yeah. That's it.
Any questions or?
Any questions on the, uh, revenue forecast from council?
You're gonna email it to us?
I'll email this spreadsheet to you, it'll have those four tabs on it, the expense summary, the expense detail sheets, and on the left side, you'll see the little plus signs that opens up the individual lines for you. Um, and there's the capital plan, the total capital numbers at the top. And you can see, we've looked at in detail the next five years, and some of those lines being rejected out to, uh, twenty-thirty. So you can see kind of what's on the, on the horizon as far as the capital improvements go. Revenues is the last one, but again, there's the buttons on the left to, to open those up and be able to look at those individually. So I'll make sure we get that tonight.
Okay, uh, I have number eleven, reports and discussion, council members. Jane.
Oh, number twelve?
Number eleven, reports and discussion by mayor, do you have anything there? Oh, no, okay, that would be number.
I'm number thirteen.
You're number thirteen, okay, city manager's report, anything in there?
We've been over a lot tonight.
So I, unless somebody has a specific question for the city manager to record it out. I guess we can go, we've been over a lot, so we'll go to number thirteen, um, reports of officer staff, boards and committee.
If there's anyone else listening out there? Okay, I just wanna remind people, uh, that absentee ballots are available until seven o'clock on Thursday, Halloween, at Caribou City Office. We will be open extended hours from five to seven to register people to vote and to update Connor and Caribou's voting list and do those absentee ballots. Polls will be open next Tuesday from eight to eight, and we're hoping for a good turnout. And, oh, just an interesting point, that no one ever moves into Caribou, they only move out. I have to notify other states when people register to vote, they come from another state, and I have mailed out, um, in the last two weeks, five people move from other states, there was, um, two from one state and an individual from three others. So these are people who had to register to vote, they're not just people that moved into town, so, that's five people that have moved here um, in the last two weeks, and want to vote.
Anything else? All right, so, uh, executive session. Next.
So moved.
Now we're gonna keep meeting, no later than ten o'clock, so.
So who's second?
No, I'm kidding, I'll second.
So, we're going ahead for, for economic development and real estate, is that the one we're going?
That's the one right there.
Yeah, so, let's, let's hope we can get it all done by ten, 'cause if not, we're gonna sit her down. Signatures?
No, no. That, you haven't voted on it yet.
I'm trying to be pro.
Well, that's a, after executive session.